Welcome to this special meeting, and I am looking for a move to go into Executive Council.
Uh, findings.
Findings, sorry.
I'll make a motion for findings.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Looking for a second?
Invite me, Brian.
And I'd like to invite the city manager and the head of DPW, Brian Baker.
Thank you. All right, Amanda, you'll have an invitation.
We have to, we have to vote.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
See people.
There you go.
Motion to executive, executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is passed, and we will adjourn until 6 o'clock. Motion, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, sure, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Boarder question, do you want to adjourn this meeting so that way we can then start the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Because we're currently in a special meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, council. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and I will call this regular meeting of the Berry City Council to order. First item on the agenda is, excuse me, second item on the agenda is any adjustments to the agenda. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have two adjustments. One is to remove item 4E from the consent agenda. This is, council, is about the MCRF loan fund refunding. And I sent you an email about this. This was a sort of a semantics issue between refunding and repaying. We're working with the bond bank. It appears we don't need to do any paperwork to, to close this out. So if we do anything, we'll be back to you at the next meeting, but at this time, we don't need anything. And I'm asking you to add an item. I guess we could make it the new 4E, which would be to approve PVR Form 4155, which you also received an email.
We have, I have F. That is F on the agenda.
I also have that F.
Oh, yes, F, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but the new item for F will be?
Correct, PVR Form 4155 approval, which is to, it's a submission to the tax department for closing out the grand list.
Okay.
So, and then I know, Mayor, we may or may not do item 8D. I know Councilor Guston is maybe in or out at this meeting, and she was going to lead that discussion. So just to flag that, when we come to it, we may have to defer that till the next meeting.
Yep, no worries, council. Any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. Just when we get to, when we do get to the consent agenda, I would like you to go through for, go through 4G and
Yes.
H in a little bit of detail. I mean, I realize that, you know, the funding is all pre-approved, but it's still cumulatively close to 900,000.
Absolutely.
Okay, awesome. All right, so nothing else? Any under visitors and communications? Is there anyone who would like to address the council regarding an item not on the agenda? Representatives Putin and Wazak, how are you?
Good, how are you? Hello, Mr. Mayor, council.
And before you begin, I'm already hearing good things. You guys are everywhere, down at the State House. You're representing the city well, so thank you so much.
Of course, and only half of them are lies. So typically, in talking to Nicholas, we'll have, like, scheduled agenda items for legislative updates. That was supposed to happen today. It did not, just through a miscommunication. So we thought we'd come in and provide an update on what's been going on, because we are now in the midst of the legislative session. Last time we came and did an update for y'all, it was the early days of the session, and it was a lot of pomp and circumstance and FYIs and property taxes 101 and all of that fun stuff. And we've now officially got to the meat of the session. Looks like you have some stuff to prepare. Do you want to go first, or?
Sure, I mean, yeah, that's fine. All right, so regarding the charter changes, it's being duly considered. According, I've reached out to our lobbyists, and I've talked to the vice chair of the committee, and they're working on it. As, I've talked to Teddy about it, and they want to make it as a, one of those easy things to do, because it's a, it's an easy charter change for the new folks. The tax, the TIF reimbursement of the 400 and?
37,000.
$437,000. That's in committee now with the Ways and Means, with Teddy. So he's going to pull that off the wall, right?
Yes.
Good job. It, it should be a pretty easy bill. It's owed to us, so it shouldn't be a problem. There's, I'm still working on the, the actual TIF, project-specific TIF bills, but I've been learning a lot about SPARC, strategic projects. I, I can't remember it's, I can't remember the name, but it's, it's the governor, governor's proposal. It's a project-specific TIF. It's quite interesting. I would highly recommend taking a look at it. I can forward.
What are the acronyms for that? SPARC?
SPARC.
S.P.A.R.C.?
Yeah, I apologize for not knowing the actual acronym.
Just needed a name, thank you, sir.
That's okay, Teddy doesn't know either, right? Okay, so I'm not alone. But it's a very interesting program. I think it could be extremely beneficial here for Berry City, especially as we talk about, you know, redoing our, our North End, or even Prospect Heights, or something else out there would be extremely beneficial. I know that I have submitted a bill regarding people that commit crimes in, in houses that they don't live in. There should be restrictions on those people to go back into those places. So like the Berry Manor, we oftentimes have people that are committing drug activity there. And there's no restrictions placed upon them if they don't live there, and they really should be. That's on the wall. I don't know if that's going to go anywhere. I know Teddy did a bill, and I'll let you take that one over for the 30, 30%.
Sure, yeah, so I introduced a bill with the League of the Cities and Towns, League of Cities and Towns, to, short version is let towns municipalities keep more of their local options tax money. As of right now, the state takes 30% of local options tax in order to pay pilot payments, payment in lieu of taxes for state-owned buildings. Each of the last three years, the Pilot Special Fund, which is the exclusive use of local options tax dollars, has run a $3 million surplus. So the state's currently, when we get the next revenue update, it'll be close to $12 million in surplus in the Pilot Special Fund. So my bill would change the formula from 70/30 to 80/20, so a 10% increase in the amount of local options tax that we collect. And there are various proposals for how to send the roughly $12 million back to the municipalities. That, it's basically extra money that the state has, we could use it for a bunch of things, but the towns could make better use of it. So my bill also sends the money back. Some other things I'll highlight while I have the microphone is in the budget, the governor's proposed budget, there is $1 million for Prospect Heights, and there's a $1 million connecting back to that Pilot Special Fund that we were just talking about. The governor's proposing using $1 million of that to reimburse towns for lost grand list value for buyout properties. So any property that goes through the FEMA buyout process, taking money from the Pilot Special Fund to reimburse towns over five years and then 10 years for that lost grand list revenue. I've asked them to rename it from Buyout Reimbursement Program, because I just feel like the idea is good. I just feel like when we hear buyout reimbursements, we're like, ooh, money for buyouts. And that's, that's not what this is. But it is a good proposal from the governor's budget, and we discussed that. We had Doug Farnum in committee to discuss that as well. So those are the big takeaways from the governor's. Those are the most relevant things for Berry City from the governor's proposed budget. Working on that local options tax bill, which has about 60 cosponsors across the chamber. So we will get some action on that this year. The details, of course, will be worked out. Also, we'll have a draft of the 2025 Flood Omnibus Bill later this week. That bill will be, we'll have one big bill that will get introduced, and then we'll have six or seven smaller bills that basically just chop up the big bill into more digestible pieces for the committees of jurisdiction. So rather than having one big bill go through seven committees, we're going to have seven bills, each that have to go through one or two committees. And that bill is very focused on building and reinforcing and staffing up state systems and state support for municipalities across the state that have been impacted by flooding. And it's everything from additional staff for Vermont Emergency Management to more power for A&R to come in and do direct flood mitigation projects without having to go through a bureaucratic rigmarole, as well as some very specific projects like the Randall Meadow in Waterbury. Tangible things that would have a very real and fast impact for our municipalities. And one of my favorite is a fleet of Vector trucks that would be shared regionally across the state, which a little birdie told me does have the support of the governor, because who doesn't love a Vector truck?
Christian also has his hand up, but Teddy, I just wanted to make clear. So would part of the Flood Omnibus Bill make it faster to do flood mitigation?
Yes, there, there are, there will be, and again, once I have text, I've submitted the outline to the council. I'm just waiting for the actual text back, and I'll send that to all y'all so you can look through it as well. But yes, there is an explicit part where A&R would be able to bypass some of the permitting requirements for very clear and obvious flood mitigation projects that have been identified by the towns. And I will also say that another reason I'm very proud of this bill is that it wasn't Teddy and Michael putting together a list of all of the flood things that we thought would be great. We did extensive outreach to members from flood-impacted communities, and basically, anything that they told me their town needed went in the big bill. And so, like I said, we'll have more detail and legislative language on that later this week.
Christian, did you have a question?
No, I, I wanted to speak as another visitor, following our representatives.
Thank you. So Teddy has, regarding the, the change in the state allocation on local options tax, will there be testimony offered? Because I've, I've often asked the tax department, what does it cost you to administer the program? You know, I understand everything has value, but I've, I've often questioned whether it has 30% of value. So, yeah, could you give me a heads up when, because I'd really be interested in hearing that testimony? So if you, if, if you know when the testimony is going to be taken on that, I'd really be interested in hearing that. And regarding the reimbursement bill, you could call it FIGLAR, Flood-Impacted Grand List Reimbursement. FIGLAR.
We'll say that the bill also has Milton on there, too, so.
No, different bill.
Oh.
Okay, different bill.
You said flood and re, okay, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking about the governor's proposal. Yes, so there will be testimony on that. The Joint Fiscal Office recently released, last week actually, released a report where they are saying the fund could survive and continue to run a surplus at 75/25. I'm proposing 80/20. And also in the bill would be a, now we're just getting in the weeds, and I'm nerdy about this stuff, because I love this bill, but next year it would do 80/20. And if I had my magic wand, also in the bill, it recommends that JFO bring forward a, an equation by which the state knows how much it costs to administer this tax, and they know how much they need in pilot programs. So I think that we should have it structured so that the state just takes what it needs to administer and pilot, and the rest goes back to the municipalities. Maybe some years that's 70/30, maybe some years it's 80/20. Why arbitrarily assign numbers when we know how much this thing costs?
Right.
So, but that is, that's my pet project.
No, I get it. I mean, we can nerd out on this later, but I've always questioned why the state is taking the administrative funds to administer the pilot program from local options.
Oh, from, I agree.
It's, it, it's just totally different. It seems like a different animal to me. So, yeah, when they are taking testimony, if you could let me know, that would be awesome.
I was just trying to continue the nerd out with regards to local options. In addition to 30%, there is also a per reporting fee that they charge based on the number of entities that report tax revenues in, and so. And there is nothing clear in statute as to what that's meant to do. It's just laid out in statute with a strange amount. It's like $7.37 or something like that.
Jesus.
So it would be nice to review not only the, the amount kept for pilot supposedly, but also the per reporting fee.
Thank you.
Keep an eye on it, too.
Thank you. If you could let us both know, I'd appreciate it. Awesome. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
Yes. Great job. Thank you both for all your hard work down there. I've been following a lot of the stuff, and I really appreciate everything y'all are doing for not just Berry, but for Vermont. It's definitely not political. It's just getting the work done, and I really appreciate that from both of you. So keep up the great work.
Oh, and I would be very remiss if I did not mention, looking at Sonny made me think of it. We now have more details on the governor's plan to transform education in Vermont. We have a 27-page memo outlining the funding structure and a 27-page memo detailing the governance structure. Short version is, the governor is proposing moving to a foundation formula, which is when everyone gets one set rate from the state, one amount of money from the state, gets multiplied by the weights, but it's much simpler than what we're doing now. And he is proposing moving to five statewide school districts as opposed to the 119, I believe, that we have right now. Lots, while he has answered a lot of questions, of course, as is the nature with legislation, every question we ask, we get an answer to, and then that prompts five more questions. So there is a lot of detail still to be worked out. But the good news is it can't get much worse in terms of per people spending for Berry City. So my committee Ways and Means is digging into the details of the funding proposals, and the House Education Committee is digging into the details of the governance proposals. And we've also had many joint hearings with our Senate counterparts so that both bodies are more or less receiving the same information at the same time. And it's still to be determined, we all know that we're not going to solve all of this this session. So we're still figuring out, all right, can we put a foundation formula in place while we're still working on how many school districts we're going to have? What does that look like? What does the timeline look like? You know, what does the switch look like? How much money is going to be dedicated to help districts make this transition? How many school districts should we do? So there are a million and one questions to be answered, too, but we do have more solid details than we did last time I was here. And all of those documents and stuff are available on the legislative website.
And just to follow up on that, even though there is the governor's plan for five districts, for folks that might get a little concerned about that, I'm not one of those people that get concerned about that, but there's also competing bills for district breakdown of up to 25, and there's even one that's one district, which I could be sold on that.
Now, have they released examples of the foundation formula? I mean, I find it interesting, but I haven't really seen a lot of detail?
Yes, so they've released the base amount, they've released the base amount being 13,200 per student.
No phase in? Because I heard something about phasing it in, so that, with no phase in, or?
We don't know yet.
You don't know yet, okay. And how would that, Counselor Spalding, you might be able to?
That would be really nice for us as more chair. I'll put my hat on.
I mean, we're, we're significantly lower than that on our pupil, so that would?
Give us like $2,000 extra per student.
At least.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
And so that's one of those details, too. So the governor has talked about full implementation in his, in like the magic wand world, if he got everything that he wanted in his plan. He's talked about full implementation for the 27 to 28 school year. So that implies a phase in over the next two years, but the details of what that phase in looked like are not clear at this moment.
Okay, so we haven't, because that's what I was getting at. We haven't seen the phase in details, because obviously, for every district doing this, there's a district.
Does it be correct?
Yeah.
So there, there was a timeline presented, as always on her presentation. It was two, and I don't have it in front of me, but I know I sent it to the school board, and I, it was part of the, the original documentation that we received at her presentation. And it was, I think it was two years for like discussing, the governance change would not happen for two years, and then by, by the, I think it was 20, and I'm looking towards you because I sent it to you, because I can't remember.
It's fuzzy. To recap, like, there are general timeframes thrown out by the governor, but there's a lot of fuzziness that has to be worked out.
Yes. Yes.
So it sounds like you've had a lot of presentations from the AOE, and maybe how they, you know, have you had any testimony from people who actually work in schools or who are running districts, or, yeah, okay?
Yeah, this last Friday, we had a joint hearing with House Ed, and we heard from the various associations, the school boards, the principals, the supers, the NEA. We heard from the superintendent of the Colchester District, and one or two others. But most of the testimony, we felt that it was important to understand what was being proposed before inviting people to react to it. And per, there are a million and one details here to figure out. We spent most of the first month hearing just from the agency, just so we could get a better idea of what is actually being proposed. And I have standing meetings with the Berry Educators Association, with Superintendent Canning, with our business manager. And I'm, you know, obviously, I'm in touch with our school board all the time. So the approach we've taken thus far is give most of the committee time to the agency so we can have a better understanding of what's actually being proposed, and we're doing individual outreach to our on-the-ground folks. But as we progress through the session, we obviously will have more testimony in committee time from those other stakeholders. And that's incredibly important.
And I do got the timeline here. 2025 to 2026 school year, stabilize the system and support early transition planning, which will be coming up eventually, very shortly. You might not be on when we do. No, you won't be on. Then 26, 27 school year, transition to new funding formula. And then 27, 28 school year will be fully moved to a new funding and governance system. And 28, 29, rescale school portfolio to achieve quality and financial indicators.
And I will offer once again that all of that language is incredibly fuzzy.
But we can only hope.
Sure.
Any other questions, folks? Any other questions from our guests online? You're both doing a great job. I mean, honestly, what I like is the energy, because, you know, things happen fast. Like you, I mean, I literally get text messages in real time. Like today, when I was told that the administration was desifying before corrections and institutions about the governor's $1 million for Prospect Heights, and they said, you know, do you think you and Nicholas could come down and present as well at a later date? So, you know, things happen so quickly, and it's really important to have the energy level that you're both demonstrating. So thank you. You're both doing a great job. I appreciate you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, day starts early tomorrow. Be in the cafeteria at 6:00 AM.
You'll be the only one there.
Yeah. Christian, did you have something to offer?
Sure, thank you for giving me a little, a little of your time tonight. Christian Meyer, Director, Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. I'll, I'll keep it short tonight as I have to run off to my Board of Commissioners at, at 6:30. But I'm here tonight, wanted to speak to you as your representative for Washington County on the Green Mountain Transit Board of Commissioners, and brief you on ongoing conversations that you may hear about, about potential transfers of that service to a different operator. This is a conversation happening in the legislature and happening among, at the Agency of Transportation. The gist of it is, is it is being built and considered as service would be maintained across Washington County, including Berry, but could potentially save, save funding for these rural services. So I'm asking, I have no actions I'm asking for tonight, and nothing's been decided, but I wanted to make sure you all were aware that this conversation was happening, and if you need more information, that you feel welcome to reach out to me as your representative, and I can try to track down answers for you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
And thanks, Christian, for being here. I just want to also let folks know that I've spoke to Christian about this, and we're planning to have him come in, I believe, at our next meeting, Christian, just to have an agenda, so that, an agenda item, so we can talk a little bit more detail about this, this issue.
Yeah, absolutely. More things may have happened by then, and if not, there's plenty of other stuff going on that I can, I can speak to the council about that may require action related to updates, legislative updates last session. That'll be trickling through our land use planning policies.
Thank you. Joellen Mulvaney?
I'm Joellen Mulvaney from Pleasant Street in the North End.
Oh, you're really, you're really quiet and soft, Joellen.
Not usually me. All right, hold on a second. Let me check my, my, here we go. All right, my levels. How's that? Is that better?
Yep, getting better.
Great. I would really appreciate it if, when we had guests coming, whether it's from the legislature or this guest here, Mr. Meyer, that, that you warn us that it's actually an agenda item so that people who might be interested in asking questions or finding out from the, more directly what's happening. I'd appreciate that. And we spent, what, 20 minutes on that? So it, I think it would help our agenda as well as our awareness. But what I really want to say is I'm hoping that representatives are still there, because I'm very disappointed and upset that one of our representatives to the State House voted against assisting our neighbors who are unhoused. I want to remind Representative Putin that he has unhoused people in this city that he represents, and I want him to consider their safety, their health, and their welfare whenever he votes on any kind of bill that would assist them. Thank you.
You're welcome, Joellen.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else under visitors and communications? Okay, I don't see anyone, so council, we will move on to the consent agenda. We'll be approving the minutes of January 28th, 2025. The clerk does have some licenses and permits. Would you mind reading those now?
Okay, so there's a slew of licensing and permits. We're not doing alcohol, are we?
Not yet, not yet. We'll be doing liquor and cannabis at a later.
At a later date, okay. We have Casella Waste Management. Well, we have multiple waste dispensers. We have Casella. I didn't bring the list with me, so we have the actual applications. Casella, MK Trucking, those are stationary waste disposals throughout the city. We have Myers Containers. They travel through the city. Those are the three wastes. We have one transportation, that would be Payless Transportation. They have two vehicles run by Dale Q. And for the entertainment licensing, we have Gusto's. We have the Berry Elks Lodge, number 1535. We have four non-food vending Rise Up Bakery. For entertainment, we have Summer Street Tavern, or also known as Summer Street Bar LLC. For entertainment, we have the Granite, Vermont Granite Museum down in Jones Brothers Way. We have the Berry Opera House. Pearl Street Pizza for entertainment. The Firehouse, or also known as Ladder One Grill. The Berry Historical Society, or Old Labor Hall. The American Legion Post, number 10. Cornerstone, two local guys, that is for their vendor, their truck vendor. And for entertainment, we have the Berry Partnership, and we also have the fireworks for the Berry Partnership. These are all up. They've been paid. They've been cleared by Brad. They've been cleared by the fire department for the fireworks.
Thank you for reading those into the record. Council, in addition to that, we will be approving the 2025 coin drop schedule, which was included in your packet. We'll be lifting the waiver of all planning department application and recording fees for 2024 flood damage. We'll be authorizing the manager to execute contracts for a 10-wheel dump truck. This is in anticipation of the purchase. That was also in a memorandum that was in your packet for $100,000. An A&E Step 2 Headworks Final Design Amendment for $247,000. And we will be approving the state revolving loan fund applications for the wastewater plant rate study for $151,600. The wastewater plant collection system, 20-year evaluation, 20 for $216,500. And the wastewater, wastewater plant headworks replacement for $254,500. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, and approving PVR Form 4153.
55.
55, excuse me.
Samuel.
It's moved, second please. Thank you. Moved and seconded by Counselor Spalding. Either, I was going to have the manager Either, I was gonna have the manager give a brief presentation of the, yeah, of those five items. And then if you have any additional questions, we can entertain those if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So on the contracts for approval, the first one is the purchase of a ten-wheel dump truck. We're asking for a hundred thousand dollars authorization. As the mayor said, we don't have a, an invoice, we don't have a vendor yet. This is, we're asking sort of for a preemptive authorization so we can go and try to find a used ten-wheel dump truck. We believe a used truck would, would suffice for the purposes that we need it for. This came up because the Public Works Department has two ten-wheel dump trucks in its fleet now. Unfortunately, one of them is permanently stationed at the wastewater treatment facility. And as part of our, you know, learning from the recovery from the floods, you know, we learned that our dump trucks took a lot of, took a beating, our plow trucks took a beating. So a ten-wheel dump truck would allow us to extend the life and usefulness of those vehicles, not having to do the wear and tear that, that a ten-wheel dump truck could take on. So that's why we're looking for a used vehicle. We don't need a state-of-the-art new machine now. We'd like to go on the market. And if we find one for a hundred thousand dollars, we'd like to be able to strike quickly, which is why we are requesting your authorization today to do that. The second contract is two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars to pay a contract with Aldrich and Elliott, which is the engineers working on the Headworks project for us. This is to do the Step Two Final Design. And this is, this would be paid out of one of the revolving loan fund applications that's, that's in the following item, which is item four H. In item four H, we're asking for, this is technically approval for two loan agreements for the first two items listed here for the wastewater plant rate study. This is something that is required as part of our twenty-year review. And this will allow us to, to get some expert analysis of what our rates need to be to keep the wastewater plant sustainable into the future. You know, the wastewater enterprise fund is consistently underfunded. This is an area where we share services, we provide services to the town. So this will allow us to actually set rates that are sustainable for that, for that plant so that we don't have to do spikes, as we've had to do unfortunately, to keep it solvent. So this was, you're actually approving today the loan agreement, the actual application to the revolving loan fund was previously approved. But this does require council signatures, which I've been passing around to you earlier today. The second applicant, loan agreement is for the wastewater plant collection system. And there's a typo in the memo here. This is for, also was a, the revolving loan fund application was also approved previously. This is for collection system is required by our assurance of discontinuance with the state. As you remember, the illegal discharge issue, that was settled almost a year ago now, I think. But anyways, related, it's required by that. And so this is the loan agreement to the application that was previously approved to get that done. And so we, that's legally required. We have to do that. We signed, we signed and said we would do that. And then the wastewater plant headworks replacement, as I mentioned, this is the, this, this is a new application to the revolving loan fund to pay in part for the Aldrich and Elliott contract. The difference, there's a price, a price difference here is from two hundred and forty-seven to two fifty-four is because this application for the revolving loan fund includes permitting and legal fees as well. So a lot of big dollars. The only real new thing is the ten-wheel dump truck. But just appreciate the opportunity to describe what's in front of you today.
Okay, any questions regarding those items in the manager? And then we'll move on to new questions?
I was just wondering, what is the collection, what does the collection study system do?
It's, it's the, it's basically all the intake into the plan. It's where we're, it's the sewer, the sewer lines essentially.
So it makes sure that those systems are working well?
And that they're not leaking? And the volume is accurate, is correct, that sort of thing, yeah.
Thanks.
I have a question about the ten-wheel dump truck.
Yeah.
Not about the truck. My, it says in the memo that up to a hundred thousand dollars from the capital improvement fund. And I'm wondering if you can tell me what the balance is in the capital improvement fund if we take a hundred thousand?
It would be, it's north of a million at this point. It'd probably be, I believe, one, and Dawn's, Dawn may be on here, I think. I think we're north of a million, Dawn, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding the process, because I understand the bid process as it applies to schools. And I read the city of Berry procurement policy. How does this work when we're preemptively approving a hundred, up to a hundred thousand dollars to purchase this used vehicle? So you don't have to go through a bid process?
No, we do. We would still get, we would still get quotes from vendors. And so if we get, the, the challenge is that the used ten-wheel dump trucks don't come up very often for sale. So if we are able to get bids from multiple vendors, we certainly will. The reality is that we may be limited in what we do just because they're just not prevalent on the market. So we did this, we did this, I believe, last, earlier, late last year, I think, or last spring, I believe. We did the same thing with a used pickup truck, right? We didn't want to spend the money on a forty, fifty thousand dollar pickup truck. We don't need a brand-new truck. So we asked for preemptive approval to buy, I think, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar used truck. And that's, we did the same thing. We were able to get a couple of quotes for that one, and we went with the lowest one. This one will be the same thing. If we're lucky to get two, we'll, we'll get multiple quotes. But reality is we may, we may be limited, just because they're not very prevalent.
Thank you. And my last question is actually just a question about, on page sixty-nine, it's Exhibit C. And I realized I had the papers in front of me, so I apologize. The date for that is, I think it's incorrect. It's on page sixty-nine of the packet that I'm looking at here. And it's Exhibit C. And the date on the second page, it's for two, the two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollar general obligation note. The second page, in the second paragraph at the bottom, it says it's duly past six twenty-five, twenty-four. I'm assuming that should be today's date?
It, maybe. That's a, that's a document prepared to us for the bond bank, so I'll have them.
It's a little curious, because that date was a while ago.
It is. It, I will, I will have them check. They prepare all the exhibits for us.
Okay, so I.
Is that when we need to start paying it back? We'll take it.
I, well.
Twenty-five, twenty-four?
So page nine, Exhibit C.
It's Exhibit C.
See in five hundred years.
The second part, second page of Exhibit C, it looks like, yeah.
Okay. I will double-check with them. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Erica Reel?
Hi, yes, just one question. I had a question about permits. We put in a permit for Berry Pride Bake with Love. When we emailed Cheryl about when our permit was coming up, we never got a response. And I emailed Sam Stockwell, and it wasn't coming up on the permit this, this time. And I'm just wondering when our permit was coming up? Thank you so much.
This is, Erica, this is for your, the June event?
That's correct, sir.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, we've got, I didn't hear that written to the record, but we obviously have plenty of time, so.
We have received it. It just was not received in time for this meeting.
Okay, thank you so much, because we didn't have received.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have that, we'll have that approved in a timely manner for you.
Thank you so much, because we have received a response from Cheryl when we emailed her a couple weeks ago. Thank you.
I did respond to that. I had someone call me, I think it was Joe, that called me.
Correct, yeah, he never received a response from you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Okay, hearing, oh, yes.
I just wanna, is it possible that we send out a reminder to our hauling companies, the trash haulers, about our ordinance of not operating before six A M? Through the years, I've had a lot of constituent complaints that we've addressed with, through the police department, that they're operating, picking up trash before six A M. And our ordinance states that they can operate machinery before six. Can't, they can drive around the city, but they can't be picking up stuff. So we have that on an annual basis. Is it possible that we might be able to have them, as an operation, sign the ordinance or something, just saying, look, we understand it? So that way, there's no leeway with saying, well, we didn't know that that was. Because they change operation managers frequently, I know with Casellas, or have through the years, and it gets lost through the wayside.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that. I will say, I've heard, I hear from some residents about this issue from time to time. I'm like, looking at Connie Golden's name on the, on the Zoom, because I know she's one of them. Happy to do, I will say, for the most part, not, not always, but generally speaking, what I found is they're, they're trying to act in good faith. They sometimes have like a new operator running it, or they're like down a person, and so they've had to modify. So I do think that it's a good thing to remind them of. But I, I have generally found that it's not a bad faith thing. It tends to be like an anomaly in their operations. But it's always good to remind them and, and try to make sure that they comply, yeah.
Thank you. I just know that three o'clock in the morning here and that banging of trash is very disturbing. Thank you.
Connie?
Casella has been way better. They come after six, just about six, or maybe a little before, but just not much before now. So it's gotten way better, and I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, counsel, or anyone in the audience? Okay, all those in, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the consent agenda is carried. Counsel, under four A, will be approving, the city warrants will be ratifying the week of two-five, twenty-five, and will be approving the week of two-twelve, twenty-five. Is there a motion? A second, please? So moved. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
I'm Epsteiny.
So noted. Motion carries. Okay, counsel, we will move on to the city clerk and treasurer's report.
No worries. Okay, I'm gonna try and go in order of the events that are coming up. First of all, Thursday, on the thirteenth, is the Ward Two Caucus at Alumni Hall, seven P M. It is an in-person event. It will begin with nominations from the floor. And those nominates may speak their, their voice, what their agenda is, their plan is. We're gonna put a little bit of a timeline on that, and then the vote will take place right then and there. Secondly, the third quarter tax payments are due. Your little tab says February seventeenth, but it's actually the eighteenth, because the seventeenth is a federal holiday, so statute gives you that extra day. So Tuesday, the eighteenth, your third quarter tax payment is due by four-thirty P M. in the office. We are actively collecting. It's been a busy week. We have been shorthanded on top of that. And thirdly, we have started sending out absentee ballots for the Berry Unified Union School District election, as well as the Central Vermont Career Center election. You're more than welcome to give us a call at the office to request your absentee ballots, but you also may go to my voter page and request them as well. We issued forty-five ballots today. Three came in at around five P M., so I didn't get them out today. But we are hoping that it will be a steady increase as the timeline gets a little bit closer to the election, which is March fourth.
Okay, any questions, folks? Yes?
Cheryl, I was sure I saw the, the gay pride permit request come in through the things you'd sent, but that just got lost in the shuffle? Because I know that you sent out some, like, here are the things that the requests have come in. I'm sure I saw it there, so I thought it was gonna come up tonight, but it just didn't.
I can look into it, but I, I know that it came in later than most of them did. And I had spoken with Joe about that, so.
All right, thank you.
So we'll have them.
It wasn't an oversight.
But we'll have it on the agenda, the next meeting, and the event is in June. So, so the issuance will be timely. And you're aware, right? So it's all good. Okay, awesome. Any other questions? Yes?
So I asked the question last night, if we could advertise the Ward Two Caucus on the auditorium digital sign?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Yes, it's, it's on the Hill, so yes.
That would be great, thank you.
Yep.
And then lastly, could you just, would you mind just touching base with Counselor Guston? Because I had volunteered to work at the caucus.
Yes.
Counsel Spalding had volunteered, and Counselor Guston had volunteered, so.
And Carol.
And Carol had volunteered. So we just don't want to be one down. I don't know if Counselor Guston isn't feeling well.
I understand.
Yeah, we just don't want to be, we don't want to be one down of four.
Yeah, no worries.
So you may have to just throw out a call for workers.
Yeah, no worries.
Awesome, thank you. Yes?
Be more than happy to volunteer to help out that evening.
You wanna, you know what, why don't you just wander by?
And then she won't have to. I wasn't available last night because I had to work my other job, but.
No worries, why don't you?
Come by Thursday.
Wander by, the more the merrier. So we'll see you Thursday.
I put it on my schedule right now.
Yeah, so workers, they had said be there, give or take, six-thirty, I'm sure.
I'll be there for six-thirty.
Perfect. Joellen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people knew what kind of voting was happening on the thirteenth. Will it be Australian ballot?
Nope, it, it's, no, it's a caucus. So what happens is people gather, anyone who lives, I mean, anyone can go. Only folks who live in Ward Two can, can cast a ballot. So the five folks that I just was speaking about on the B C A will be checking people in, and we'll give them a piece of paper, and we'll give them a pencil. Nominations are made from the floor. You can nominate yourself if you live in Ward Two. The clerk will write the names of the nominees, nominations, we closed. Clerk will write the names of the nominees on a whiteboard so that everyone can see the names. And then what we will ask folks who are participating in the voting to do is we'll ask them to write a name on their ballot. They'll turn their ballot in, and then the five justices that we were, that I was just referring to, we will count the ballots, and we will announce the winner of the caucus right then and there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people understood that it's a secret ballot, that it's an Australian ballot, that people.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, no, we don't, yes. Yes, yeah, the ballots are, you cast your own ballot, and you place it, you place it in a box, and then the, the B C A members actually count them. So no, you're, you're not identified at all on your ballot. Yes, A J?
Hi, yes, actually, this is Caitlin Burnham. I'm watching through A J.'s screen here. I just want to verify, I called the city clerk's office a couple times last week to see about absentee ballots for this Ward Two Caucus. Nope.
Oh, there, there, unfortunately, there are no, the caucus, you, you have to be present to cast a ballot. You, so there are no absentee ballots that are considered or allowed for in state statute.
All right. So I just.
You do need to be there.
That going further, the, the clerk's office is actually educated on how people can do, properly vote in matters like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Okay, and we will move on to Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. Liquor and Cannabis Control Board is in session. What have you got for us?
We have two cannabis renewals. They are, we have a one-tier indoor cultivator, Terrapin Gardens L L C. And then we have a one-tier small indoor cultivator, Emerald Peak Cultivation. The fees are paid by the state of Vermont. After we have approved them, we receive one hundred dollars per renewal. Emsley's Florist is also applying for a Class Two liquor license renewal. The fee has been paid, and so we're just waiting for approval for them to continue through the state of Vermont.
Okay, but they have all local approval?
They all have local approval. Bradley has approved both cannabis and the florist.
Okay, would anyone care to make a motion to approve? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much, Counselor Stockwell. There has been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, A J., was your hand still up, or did you want to comment on this issue? Oh, thanks. Answered that question. All those in favor of the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
is presented, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, thank you very much. Anything else under liquor and cannabis?
No.
Okay, Liquor and Cannabis Control Board is adjourned. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a winter parking ban tonight for snow removal. The DPW crews were able to get the snow blower repaired, and so they are out, they will be out tonight getting rid of some of those snow banks, which have become quite, quite large. So on that note, we are still towing about ten to fifteen vehicles per storm. That is not good. It's not good for the owners of the vehicles. It's not good for plow truck drivers. So I again encourage people to sign up for Regroup. That is the best way to guarantee that you'll get your messages about winter parking bans. So, you know, ten to fifteen is, you know, it's, under the other parking ban, the old parking ban would have been a bad night. It's not good for it to become sort of our regular occurrence. So, you know, really encourage people to go to our website, get signed up, and avoid the couple hundred dollars that it costs you to get your car towed, and so we can get those numbers down, hopefully. And, and, you know, so Regroup's the best way, as, you know, as I mentioned, there's, you know, we post everything on the, on Facebook. We post it on our website. And access permitting, issue of VT Alert. I can do everything, I can do Regroup, Facebook, and website from my phone. I cannot do VT Alert from my phone. So if I'm not close to a laptop, I cannot send one of those messages. So I just encourage people, even if you are a VT Alert user, to use one of the other methods to become informed about parking ban issuances. The digital signs are sort of ancillary notification. I know Counselor Spalding had mentioned to me that one of them, the one at Elmo Cemetery, had been down for some time. It's actually been relocated for an actual, another road warning. But those run out of batteries, and in the winter, the sun doesn't do a good job charging them. So they are not your guarantee. They are to help you get notified, but they are not your guaranteed way to know about a parking ban. So Regroup's the best way to do it. It's free, doesn't cost you anything to use it or download it.
And it's right here.
And it's right there.
This afternoon.
So the, also, we've been working really closely with the state, TESS, and some other partners who put together the warming shelter to sort of, we had an after action to sort of codify what we've been doing. It worked really well. And so we're trying to get to sort of standard operating procedures for how we can activate these types of services, resources for residents in the future. So again, want to thank, you know, TESS did such a great job pulling this together, and really grateful the state and our nonprofit partners in this have been really helpful in making something that was really successful, making it more permanent. So we've been involved in that this week. You may have read in the Times Argus that we received our first installment of the Cozy Trust. And so that was two point four million dollars for the Hope Cemetery section, which was all invested. And we received one point six million for the capital fund, and one million of that was invested. The six hundred thousand dollars was deposited, not invested, to give the city flexibility with, with capital needs. And then just finally, we are piloting some security cameras in the downtown area. So this is a pilot program to see how, how they work and how they assist law enforcement with, with their, with their patrols and following up. So that was something that's active now, and looking forward to seeing how, how that, you know, changes the way that our law enforcement's able to respond to, to safety issues, starting in the downtown area. And we'll, we'll certainly see how it goes, and if it bears fruit, then, you know, go from there and make it perhaps permanent. So those are my updates, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions?
This one, Bern has.
Bern, did you have a question?
Hi, thank you. Thanks, Nicholas. I really appreciate the Regroup messaging, and I've gotten that. I've had the VT Alert, and I've also seen the signs. So I'm wondering, with that ten or fifteen people, are they the same people every time, or is it like totally different people?
There's a few repeat offenders, but it tends to be varying groups of people. And so I, you know, I encourage, you know, I've, we've reached out to landlords directly because some of them tend to be around rental properties. If you have visitors in town, you gotta remind them as well. We've had some out-of-town guests who unfortunately have been towed. So, you know, if people, you know, people who have guests in town, or if, you know, if you have a short-term rental, or if you're, you know, a B&amp;B, it's good to remind your guests about that as well. So it's, it's, it's not the same ten to fifteen. They're having a few repeats, but tends to be a different batch.
Thanks. That makes it a little harder to, like, reach out and get people, you know, writing, maybe if we can write to the Times Argus and have a little more splash about that. As well as thanking TESS, who also belongs to the Church of the Good Shepherd, I'd like to thank that church, who last week, they decided not to open up the auditorium again, but to open up a smaller facility like Mayor Lozan you had thought about. And so they were open on that really bitter Saturday night, and they provided dinner and breakfast. And Monday through Friday, they offer from seven to ten to be a warming station. And I really want to appreciate those people. They, you don't have to belong to that church in order to be a volunteer or to help out. And they're very welcoming when you show up, and they might even feed you dinner if you haven't had yours yet. So thank you to those people as well.
Thank you. Jeremy, Svero Win?
Yeah, thank you. Just curious if we get some more details on those security cameras, specifically where they are, how exactly they're gonna be used, what, like, procedures are in place for their use? Are, is there somebody who's gonna be dedicated to, like, watching them all day? Are they recording footage? And are they keep, and how long are they keeping those recordings for? And what, if any, like, what system is being used in order to facilitate them? Like, is there a private company this is going through? Are these somehow being managed totally in-house? Yeah, just, I could, I would personally like a whole lot more information about how those are being used. Thank you.
And before I have the manager go into that, Ellen was here, and Lisa, were your questions along those same lines?
Yeah, mine was. I can listen for the answer and see if I have anything else, but yes.
Okay. And Lisa, were your questions along those same lines?
Yes, to everything that Jeremy said, but I also wanted, I mean, that was a surprise to me that they were, there were cameras up. And my concern is, is there a policy on this? And does counsel not get to have any type of a say or weigh-in on this? Just concerned that we would leap to putting up cameras everywhere without anything in place. And everything Jeremy said. Thank you.
Yep. So what I was going to, I mean, Nicholas, it's up to you, if you want to get into this. What I was gonna suggest is that we put this on the agenda at the next council meeting.
Happy to.
We have Chief Vale come in as well, and we give Nicholas the opportunity to prepare a very thorough briefing for the council and for the public. Would that, would that be okay, Ellen, Lisa, and Jeremy?
Well, if they're already installed and we're using them, I think that we should at least have a perfunctory explanation of some of those answers, and, or don't use them until we're gonna do that.
Where they are?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, not just where they are, but, but the questions that Jeremy raised, if you, if we are employing, I think that there needs to be some explanation. And if not, like, let's wait till next meeting to employ them. And also, could I make a general request? I would really like to be able to see the manager when he's speaking, but the way the computer is, blocks him entirely, his computer, at most meetings. And I would, I really appreciate being able to see him when he speaks.
Yeah, that's.
Thank you.
I, so Ellen, my mom says the same thing. My mom says, he's a handsome man, how come he hides his face?
And no, and the, it's, it's, he's got the computer monitor in front of him because this, it's easier to monitor the meeting and monitor folks who have their hands raised with the computer monitor in front of you than it is to be constantly looking at the screen. So, so he has that partially for his own benefit, and, and also for mine. But I'll see if we can't maybe put it in the middle of us and, and try to do something different with that. So Nicholas, would you like to answer some of those questions that?
Yeah, there, I mean.
Why don't you start with location?
Sure. The location is in, at the intersection here outside City Hall, looking towards the park, which tends to be an area where there's a lot of increase in the quality of crimes issues that we've been talking about since last September.
So it's on the building facing the park?
Yes, correct.
And there's been one there since two years, two years more?
Much longer.
Yeah, much longer than that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So just to be clear about that, there was, we did have a camera deployed there for quite a number of years, and so I guess you've reactivated.
We've, we've, yeah, it's, it's a new device, which has some panoramic viewing. It's an area that has been, you know, like, like I said, it was a high-traffic area for a lot of the quality of life issues that a lot of people have been concerned about and dealing with, and that our police department has been responding to. So it's an upgraded camera. It's, the police chief can speak to the, you know, the recording policies and, and the retention policies. But we, you know, our police department uses security cameras, privately use security cameras in their investigations. And in fact, we, we encourage people to, to notify them, businesses, for example, if they have cameras that they can tap into for, you know, for the response to law enforcement activities. And so, yeah, I'll, I'll let the chief do the, you know, discuss the rest of it. But it's, it's really an effort to address the area that has had the greatest spike and respond to concerns from residents that have come. And, and not just that, but to respond to activity that our police department has data to back up of where these quality of life issues are happening and where they're concentrated, so.
And who has access to the footage? Who can, who can see the footage and who has access to it?
Police department has access to it. We have dispatchers who can see it in case they get calls. And our IT person has access for troubleshooting.
But other than that, you don't?
No.
Obviously.
I have, I have been able to see it. I, I may be able to log in, but I, yeah, I think I could probably still log in, but I, it's not a monitoring situation.
Understood.
Yeah.
You're good.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Is it just one camera?
Yes, it's one camera, yeah.
Okay, because we were saying cameras and locations, and so I was.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It's all in the singular camera.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. As a city councillor, I remember this conversation coming up multiple times, and it is a huge supported idea, having cameras in the city because of the, the small quality of life issue crimes that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I just, one other clarifying point. This was referred to as a pilot, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is the intent to then expand to have more and more cameras throughout the city, does that pilot refer to some specific trial with a, a private company or something like that? Can, can you just give me some more details on what?
It's a pilot, which means that it's, it's a new camera that was installed, and so we're trying this new technology, which is a little bit, gets a little bit better vision and panoramic view. And yeah, absolutely, if it's successful, and it bears fruit in terms of our response to, to quality of life crimes or other crimes, then, then we would consider expanding it, absolutely. At the, you know, certainly at the recommendation of the police department. But it's a pilot now because it's in one, it's a new cam, it's a, it's a, it's a new, physically new camera in a location that previously had a camera with an improved visual acuity is, is why it's a pilot.
Thank you. But then the intent would be to expand surveillance throughout the city, correct?
If it's successful, that, and the chief believes that it would have, it would be success, that it would help in responding to crimes, and he makes that recommendation, then absolutely I would consider doing something like that.
Okay, and does the, does city council have oversight over that? How does, how does that work? Like, if you decide to put up?
I can guarantee you that will be before the city council, Jeremy.
Okay. But this was, so this was just, where do the funds for this new camera come from? Like, how did that work?
This is, this is, this is a similar camera system that we have at the Public Safety Building. So it's an expansion of that, that system.
Okay, so it's drawn from, it's drawn from police funds, in other words?
Yes.
Follow-up question that was asked, do we have a policy for, do we have a policy for a city, or does the police have a policy?
There's no city policy. I don't know if this is one of the policies that the chief has gone through the pack with. He can certainly answer that.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
There, yeah, I mean, if we're, I mean, before we all get too far ahead of ourselves, this is the replacement of an existing camera on City Hall Park. I mean, obviously, the way I feel about it, I appreciate and support, giving law enforcement the tools they need to be effective and to be efficient. But, you know, obviously, if we, if we move forward with the pilot program and we expand the use of cameras, there will be a public hearing. There will be full disclosure and transparency, and we will have a policy going forward in terms of who is allowed to view the footage, who is allowed access to the footage, and who is not, obviously. So stay tuned. We'll plan on getting this on the council agenda. I don't know, because this is in one existing camera, we've established who does and does not have access to the footage, or, so I don't know that it's necessary. I mean, I think if you were going to expand the cameras, you replace the camera.
Yeah, right.
That's essentially what happened.
That's what we did, yeah.
That has existed for years. But I think if you're to consider an expansion of the system, installing more than one camera, or even making this camera the type, when you talk about panoramic views, can they change the view so that it's looking at more than City Hall Park? I think at that point, we, we do need to get this on the agenda, have a public hearing, just so folks can understand what we're up to.
Yep.
Yeah? Everybody okay with that?
Okay, awesome. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, then counsel, we will move on to item eight A on the agenda. This is the second reading, warned for six twenty PM. We're a little past that, sorry about that. This is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash one, our open meeting law updates. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the packet includes the markup on the ordinance. This draft should include all the edits that were identified at the first reading. The only other change I highlighted for you in the memo was that Chief Cushman in the Fire Department had taken a closer look at the Fire Emergency Services section, and we did similar actions there where we aligned it more closely to current practice. You know, a lot of the things that were in this ordinance are, are really governed by our collective bargaining agreement, so they really have no place in ordinance at this point. So that's, that's it. The real meat of this didn't change. And so we ask for your approval of the ordinance on second reading. And if you do approve it, it will be published in the Times Argus on Saturday, and it will become effective fourteen days after that.
And just to remind you, counsel, this is something that the council said they would do pursuant to an open meeting law violation. So is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Yes?
So I am wondering, I have a couple of thoughts. One, it's being presented as an open meetings law update, but there are definitely more changes in here. And in the, you know, in, in the vein of trying to be transparent, I think that it is a little bit disingenuous to say that it's just public meeting or open meeting law updates. Especially, and I mentioned this last time, we have completely, completely abolished the Recreation Department. It no longer exists in ordinance, which means we no longer have, and, and it could come back. I understand this is how we're operating now. But it is, it's a sad thing that a city of our size doesn't have a Recreation Department or any kind of person to head up Recreation. So I, I don't support that being struck. And I also appreciated that former Chair Mulvaney requested the review of the, the ordinance through the Equity Assessment Tool. And I think that it would be helpful for us to consider how the things that we're striking, regardless of how we are operating, how that's impacting other people in the city. It may not impact us, it may not impact me sitting here at this table, but there may be other people who this is impacting when we get rid of a Recreation Department, for example. And so I think that, I recognize that we need to approve the open meeting law changes, but at the same time, I would encourage the council to consider more thorough ordinance reviews. And maybe that means we just have to have a committee. I know there was a question, Counselor Deering had a question when we were discussing the vacant building ordinance and vacant commercial building ordinance. And so I wonder if we can pump the brakes on the wholesale, like, abolishment of the Rec Department and just do the open meeting law and pronouns. I'm completely fine with those things. But I think that a more thorough review of ordinances and a more transparent process, so people understand what's actually in here. This isn't just open meeting law changes, would be really beneficial to the community. isn't just open meeting law changes, would be really beneficial to the community.
Well, let's deal with that one first. I'll get to you in a moment, Councilor, but I'll ask the clerk as well for a little bit of guidance. I don't know, I mean, our choices are to, we went through a first reading, now we're at a second reading, and the changes that you are proposing are fairly substantive. So we would have to either, our choice is just, so council understands procedure, our choice is to approve this as presented because this is how it went through the first reading, or it will, or it does not pass, we bail out on it, and we go back and redo the changes. So those are, or, behind door number three, we could approve this in the interest of staying with our open meeting law revision timeline, and then we could go back and revise it further. We could reinsert the Recreation Department, make any other requested changes that council might want to make, and then we could go back through the process, warrant a first hearing and a second hearing. But we can't just, so just to answer your question, Council, we can't just, you know, pick that, that one section out, leave the open meeting law section intact and, you know, the clerk's nodding that she agrees with my assessment. It's a substantive change, that's the problem. You can do that a little bit during the first reading process, but what you're proposing is a pretty substantive change. So I don't have a preference one way or the other, I'm just telling the council what your options are. Councilor Stockwell?
I also heard from several people about the removal of the Recreation Directors, so I do think that warrants more of a conversation. And I think, you know, when we're talking about open meeting law and access, access is incredibly important, how we let people come and speak, how we welcome people in, it is really important. So I think if there are concerns, the city is well-served by us looking at this over a little more closely.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you want to start the process over, in terms of the city's earlier admission of an open meeting law violation, I mean, I don't really have concerns as long as we're moving in good faith to correct our ordinances to comply with state statute. I don't have a particular concern about starting over, if that's what you want to do. But we'll need to have someone, you know, make the revision, so who would like to do that? Or is your suggestion simply leave the Recreation Department in, or do your changes go beyond that? Because that's what I heard in your comments.
Well, my primary, my primary, I'm assuming you're speaking here?
Yep, yep.
My primary concern is for the Recreation Department, but I also know that the use of the Equity Assessment Tool may bring up other issues that may be in other areas. And so I want to make sure that we're addressing all of the things and recognizing that the impact that we are having by making these changes will be on other people. And Mrs. Mulvaney, Ms. Mulvaney would like to speak, so maybe she can enlighten us.
Jolynn?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a really good idea to separate, I mean, it is very important to do, to do all of this, and certainly they could use some revision, all of them, but, and looking at and study, but you certainly can choose door number four, which could be just bring back at the next meeting those parts of the ordinance changes that relate to open meeting and changing the pronouns, which I think is also a good idea, and then create a working group, whatever you want to call it, of folks to get together to work over the other ordinances, and probably do all of them. And I remember, I recall, because I happen to know one of the people really well who volunteered, that Mr. Stanek and Mr. Deering were going to look at one ordinance, and I know that recently the charge for the JEDEB committee was to look at ordinances as well. So, yeah, we need a comprehensive look at it, and it means studying why we have the ordinance in the first place, is it useful now? I mean, maybe at one point, a city physician was a good idea, like during a pandemic, but we might not need one now. So I think it's a wise idea to put the brakes on for now, bump those decisions about the open meeting to the next meeting, and then create an opportunity for people to get involved in really digging into and looking at useful, what kinds of useful ordinances we can have and what the uses are of the ones we do have. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Yeah, I mean, council, I don't, I don't have a strong preference one way or another, but if we're, if we're going to convene a working group, so when I think about doing that, everyone has different schedules, everyone has busy schedules, so, you know, let's say, for example, a working group takes a week or so to organize, needs to meet a couple of times, let's call that two or three weeks, maybe needs to be one more time to work all of the revisions in, now you're talking a month, get it on the council schedule, that could take six weeks. Now I'm getting a little concerned about a commitment the council made to correct our, the open meeting law deficiencies and reconcile the ordinance with state statute. Now, you know, now we're pushing six weeks, two months, and that's got me a little nervous. So what I prefer, I mean, I'll defer to the council, like I said, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another, but my preference would be that council passed the ordinance as presented, as presented at the first reading, as presented now at the second reading, then we can say we fulfilled our commitment to correct our deficiencies in our ordinance versus the state statute relative to the open meeting law, and then we can still convene the working group. We don't have to put them under a tight timeframe, we can say, take your time, be thoughtful about it, use the Equity Assessment Tool, give people a chance to weigh in, and we don't, we're not feeling any, any sort of time pressure regarding an earlier commitment. So Lisa, did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, so my suggestion, because there's a motion and a second on the table, you're going to have to vote on this, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No, unless they withdraw.
Okay, all right. So my suggestion would be bring this back next week with just the open meeting law corrections that have already been proposed, because those seem fine. And then look at the rest of everything, because I, I'm also highly concerned that the Recreation Department is being struck here. I, my, I guess it was my understanding that we were going to advertise and hire Recreation people after Jeff and Stephanie's buyout term ended, it was like August. And I don't, and so I think that we have that in the budget. I don't know why we haven't hired anybody, or why the job isn't posted on the website, or what even the plan is for the Recreation Department, but I'm just highly concerned that that's being struck. Right now, that's my only problem I have with the ordinance as presented in the packet.
Yep.
So that's it. I don't want to see that struck. I would have questions if it's going to come back again at a future time, who knows when that would be?
Yeah. No, and I appreciate your comment, but the, the issue is that we've gone through a process. We've had a first reading, this is scheduled for second reading, and I apologize, council, I don't, I don't keep these things in my calendar right to the date. But I think if we defer this, if we, first of all, if we remove, if we move, if we remove the second, the section about the Recreation Department or Director, that I believe is a substantive change. And I've got a clerk here nodding and a former clerk nodding, it is a substantive change, and we need to start over. So I just want to make the council clear about that. Like I said, it's, you know, nothing up my sleeve, no sleight of hand, we can pass this, fulfill our earlier commitment to reconcile our, you know, our ordinance with state statute relative to the open meeting law, and then we can launch right back into the first reading, second reading process, and make the necessary revisions, giving a working group the time they need to really think about what we want to have in terms of recreation. I mean, I share many of these same concerns, but I'm also mindful of an earlier commitment that the council made. Jolynn?
Yeah, I, I don't think you understand, maybe, I'm not sure what's going on, but it's pretty clear that you actually can withdraw from today doing this in some way, either by voting it down or withdrawing the motion, and then bringing back that section that really is important to us to do immediately or as soon as possible, that talks about the open meeting law, and then do those other things later. So yes, start over, you don't, I don't know if you have to actually start over from the beginning, maybe you can just bring it to a second vote after these revisions, because how would you expect anyone to do revisions at all if you just brought it up two weeks ago? So it doesn't, it doesn't sit well that, that you're not willing to do that.
Well, I guess I am willing to do that. What I'm pointing out to the council is that there is a process, and once you start that process, once you schedule a first reading, and then you schedule a second reading, there are certain timeframes that need to be met. You can't schedule a second reading six months after you have a first reading, you're not allowed to. So that's all I'm pointing out to the council is that procedurally, I don't have an issue with any of the changes that are being suggested, but they are substantive. So if the council chooses not to pass them this evening, we just need to start over, and that's all I'm pointing out to the council. The only concern that I have about that is that there was complaint issued, the council made a commitment to do something, we had certain dates in there, and if we start over with this process, all I'm simply doing, and I'm not advocating or telling the council to do thing, one thing or another, I'm simply explaining to the council that you will not meet the commitments that you said you would meet at an earlier meeting. That's all I'm saying. Jeremy?
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more that there's a procedure in place. It strikes me that the purpose of the procedure, breaking it into a reading and then a second meeting, is specifically to allow for greater consideration of the wisdom of moves like this. And so it strikes me as completely appropriate and entirely in keeping with the spirit and intention of the ordinance to reconsider the motion, proposed changes, whatever you want to call it. And, yeah, go back and come back next meeting with a, with a relative, with a, with a significant but pretty easy, pretty straightforward to implement revision to the ordinance that would follow the intention of what was warned in the first place, and hew more closely towards a, you know, narrowly tailored remedy to the, to the issue before us, and then pass that process, which could be done relatively quickly, and then return to all these other unrelated, arguably non-German changes to city ordinances at a later date. That seems very much in keeping with the intention and purpose of having a process that's designed in this fashion. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Dawes?
Mr. Mayor, that is the process that can be followed. We used to go all the way back to first readings, but we got a legal opinion that said, no, once you've done a first reading and moved to a second reading, you then can continue at the second reading phase while you make adjustments. You do have to, if you're not going to pass something tonight, you will have to publish again this weekend warning or before the next hearing, which I'm assuming your council meeting would be in a couple of weeks. And so you'd have to publish before that, and you would warn a new second reading with any adjustments. But that is what the layout is, the statutory.
What's our timeframe on that, between first and second?
It's the length of the council meetings from, from one to the next.
Right.
So if you're...
But we can't go beyond, is there a 30-day between first and second?
There isn't a specific date.
So there's nothing there?
No.
Okay. So council, what would you like, yes?
No.
Oh, council, what would you like to do? Yes?
I would propose that I withdraw the motion to, whatever the motion was, to approve it.
Okay.
And that we then do just what?
So what we'll do is you would like to convene a working group?
Point of order. Didn't I make the motion?
Yeah.
So I can't, you can't withdraw my motion?
I thought I made the motion.
I kind of defer. I believe you did make the motion.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Deering made the motion, and you seconded the motion.
Okay, well.
So he...
I'll withdraw my second.
You can, you can withdraw your second, and then the motion will die for lack of a second because we're not getting support over here. So procedurally, council, what would you like to do? What I'm hearing is that I've heard folks volunteer to convene a little working group, we'll need to rewarn a second hearing, and we'll need to come back at some point in the future. Yes?
I would recommend that we warn a second reading for our next council meeting and just have the open meeting law updates. Then we have covered our obligations to change the open meeting law and ordinance, and then we convene a working group to discuss the rest of the ordinance. That's it, to discuss the Recreation, to discuss the City Physician, to discuss whatever else has been struck.
Okay.
And just address the open meeting law changes next council meeting as a second reading, and then...
So everything else would be restored? With the exception of the open meeting law, that's what you're suggesting?
That's my recommendation, because I, I don't have, you know, list by, you know, note by note of what should stay or what should go.
Right, but if that's what council wants to do, somebody's going to have to do the work.
Right, but not for next week, it's just open meeting law for next, or not next week, but the next meeting.
Right, so you want to, so strip everything, all the changes, with the exception of the open meeting law reconciliation?
Right, because that's our current ordinance, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay, that's what you'd like to do. Councilor Stockwell?
That's my suggestion.
Yes, just put in for Article 1 of Chapter, Chapter 2, suggest do Article 1, that has the open meeting law changes.
Okay, so we'll schedule that for a hearing. Everyone's okay with that? Okay? That's what we will do, we'll rewarn and, yeah, we'll see you next time. Council, we'll move on to item 8B on the agenda, this is to approve the 2024 TIF Annual Report Certification.
Good evening.
Ms. Dawes, how are you?
Good, and all of you?
Doing great, thank you.
I'm sure you've read through this. This is an annual process we're required by state statute and the Vermont Economic Progress Council to submit an annual report associated with our TIF district. It follows fiscal year, so it's related to the fiscal year that ended June 30, 2024. They send us the spreadsheet, the colorful spreadsheet that you see there. Anything that's in green cells are information from past years that are already populated, and we don't, we can't change those, we fill in the, the yellow cells. And then in addition to that, there are several narrative boxes. Unfortunately, when I print out the, or PDF the spreadsheet, the narrative boxes don't expand so that you can read them, so in addition to the spreadsheet, I provide you with a copy of the expanded narrative sections that are referenced back to the names of the cells that they're, that they're expanding, and so you can see what is in that information. The report is created by me and then reviewed by Janet as our planning director. She's been implementing the TIF projects and funding, et cetera, for basically most of its life, and has been a great backstop for me to run by narrative sections and things like that. So it has been presented to VEPSE, they do a first look-through, once they're comfortable with it, it comes back to the governing body, it gets presented to you at a meeting, and then it gets certified and sent back to VEPSE. The certification form, which is the last page of the packet, or of the spreadsheets, or is it the last page? No, last page of the packet, that I sent you, will ultimately indicate that it's been presented to council and will be signed by the assessor, and me, and the manager, and then... And then we'll move on from there. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are specific questions associated with the report or if there's anything, any questions TIF-related.
Very well done. I do read it. Yes?
I was going to make the same compliment. I really appreciate all the work that you've done with TIF, especially hearing and seeing the horror stories that Burlington is going and has been going through. So really just appreciate everything you do for our city to make sure that we're doing things the right way and just completely by the book. So you have my complete admiration.
As was mentioned before, with the, when the representatives were here, we've got a couple different TIF-related bills that we're following in the legislature this year. One is the proposal for an extension with regards to when, how much time we have to incur debt. And we're hoping to get some additional time. We have been heavily impacted over the past five years from COVID and then from the flooding, obviously. And having additional time would, would make a big difference for us to be able to use the rest of our TIF capacity. The, also included in that same bill is the idea of developing project-based TIFs, which would support smaller area TIF projects. Right now, TIFs require a district. Our district runs from essentially here all the way down North Main Street to where Hospital Hill comes down and from the river to Summer Street. And the project-based TIF would allow for more concentrated development areas and would be a little easier to administer. Because the TIF districts are difficult to administer, it kind of leaves smaller communities out, communities that don't have the bandwidth to deal with the administration. So finding ways for other communities to be able to take advantage of this really wonderful economic development tool would be great. So we're supporting that. The other thing that we're working on is, it came to light while the state auditor's office was doing the audit on the Milton TIF district, that there is an error in the way increment is being calculated in our accounting software. It's not our problem. I mean, it's not our fault. It has to do with the way the calculations are done in the software. The Milton has about $140,000, I think it's about that, of money that was paid to the Ed Fund that should have remained with the town. And it's tied to properties that have tax stabilization agreements. Because Berry City also uses tax stabilization agreements, the auditor's office started looking at our numbers and it turns out we had had the same kind of errors in calculation in our case to the tune of about $437,000. So we have made the request, because the Ed Fund can't just give money back to us with that legislative approval, we have partnered with Milton to make the request of the legislature to approve that refund to both our communities. We have done similar work in the past when we competed, completed our state TIF audit in '21. There was $23,000, $30,000 that was found due to us from the Ed Fund. And so again, we went through the legislature. So this is a process that we have been through before. And so we have reached out to, the bill is being written. We've reached out to House Ways and Means and to Senate Finance, which were the same committees that worked with us last time. So we're, we're confident that this will move forward, but we're keeping an eye on it, so.
So we may get extra money, like Monopoly?
It's TIF increment money.
Yes.
So there, and there are, you know, obviously limitations as to what it can be spent for, but it can be spent for TIF-related project costs, so.
So the fact that four and five haven't happened, the Wortham Block and the Ralel Plant, is that, does that give us extra capacity or is that a negative? So I don't know, it's not paginated, so I don't know which page it is, but it's performance indicators?
It's, it's not, I think there's little page numbers in the bottom.
It's four of eight.
Bottom quarter.
Okay, four of eight.
The, the real property development that's listed in there is, reflects what was in the TIF plan, which was written back in 2012. And at that point in time, what, what you have to do in your TIF plan is you have to project what you think might be private development that happens within the TIF district that would support the debt service associated with the, with the TIF projects. These are the five projects that were identified in the TIF plan. That was almost 13 years ago. Things happen, projects change. We've, you know, these don't reflect the Dunkin' Donuts building, which was a huge building. They don't reflect what is now the Community Bank Building, what was Merchant's Bank. So obviously, private development changes in a community. So the fact that those couple of places have not come to fruition at this stage of the game don't have, because they've been offset by other development that has happened, it's, in many ways, it's a guesstimate at the time that you write your plan, so.
And original tax valuation, that comes from the prior assessments?
It comes from when the TIF plan is approved. That's a, a date in time where you look at your grand list and all the properties that are in the TIF district, their assessments at that time, on that date, that's their original taxable value. And any changes up or down from that day on impact the increment or decrement. You know, we've had a few properties that have, have decreased in value, so. But obviously, it, it all adds together. And in the diff, the entire district, we've obviously seen, you know, a significant amount of growth, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great job, Carol. So council, a motion to accept the TIF Annual Report Certification as presented would be in order?
So moved.
Beg your beg. Any other, any other discussion, council? Hearing none. All those who favor the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you very much, Ms. Dawes. Always a pleasure to have you. So all yours, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
So I'm going through the PowerPoint just for people who are watching at home. This wasn't included in the packet because the survey was open through Friday at 4:00 PM. So we didn't have time to get the results in the packet. This is posted on the city website. If you go to city manager's page, there's a section that, for city budget information and it is posted there. And then Dawn is joining me. She's on vacation, so she's doing extra duty here to help answer any questions. So just to start it off, the goal for tonight, so this is our kickoff meeting on the budget. You know, we're, we're looking for council to provide some clear and consensus direction so that we can provide you with a credible preliminary budget that, that we can start to dig into. So the things that will be helpful to know are, what are your priorities for the budget? What are expenses we can reduce, services we can eliminate? And the reason I'm talking about elimination is because you'll see, I'm sure you've seen some of the numbers already in the presentation. We're, we're looking unfortunately to have to make those reductions. What are investments we should make? You know, I think even in difficult times, we can't, you know, we can't stop making important investments. So what are those that, the areas we should target? And then the, the big one, right, like what's, what's the projected tax rate that we should target? That's, that's going to give us the best direction so that we can give you a better product to start working with. So just a couple, the first couple of slides are recaps. This first one is a recap of the current budget that we're operating under. And it was a $14.8 million total expense budget. Of that, $10.1 million was raised by property taxes. We had, we implemented $246,000 of savings in that budget. And we were supported with a million dollars from the state legislature that made, made it possible to have a really good budget last year that didn't completely spike our tax rates. So we, you know, thank the voters for approval of this budget last May. It was a responsible budget. It protected important services. It helped us make some, some important improvements in, in the city as well. The baseline conditions for FY '26, red arrows indicate bad direction. So that's their, you know, they're all, they're all bad. So we have 5% contractual wage increases. And I should clarify, you know, it's, I don't think it's bad that we're, that our employees are getting increases. We have to, you know, they deserve it. They work hard. And, and to keep people, we need to keep, you know, we need to keep up with the cost of living. So, you know, it's, it's a bad indicator because it's an increase of a cost, but I think it's important. We've, we've negotiated, I think, responsible contracts with our employees. 18% healthcare rate increases, which we have no say in. These increases are just becoming very, very difficult to absorb. This is on top of double-digit increases last year, also in the 20% range. So we're looking at, you know, close to 40 over two years. You know, I think, speaking in my, you know, sort of on a personal level, I'd be willing to pay these healthcare increases if we were able to get to a doctor with any sort of, you know, relatively quick timeframe, but that's not the case either. So, you know, we're paying a lot and unfortunately, you know, I know people still struggle to get the, the healthcare they need in a timely manner, so. But this is a real impact on our budget. We have really no fund balance left, right? So if we were in these difficult circumstances through other reasons, right, if we'd had a particularly bad year for whatever the case may be, you know, we could have used maybe some fund balance to give us a little wiggle room or to help protect ourselves from a spike. You know, people don't like to use, it's not good practice to use one-time resources for, you know, to, to keep the tax rate down. But, you know, like, like I said, if we had been in a, in an anomalous situation where we had some fund balance to maybe make it a little bit less bad, that would have been good to have. We just don't have it here, right? Where there's no fund balance left to, to really smooth out the increases. We have loss of grand list value due to buyouts. These are starting to come to fruition this year. We're now in the, as I mentioned to the council a couple of weeks ago, we have several, over a dozen approved buyouts that are now in the appraisal stage. So we are very close to having actual loss of grand list value hitting us really soon. We've already had, the assessors have reassessed a lot of flood damage properties, which has resulted in $3 million of the loss of grand list value alone. So this is, this is becoming very, it's, it's very real. And then the loss of the state operational aid, which I said last year was instrumental and that is, that is obviously not guaranteed. So these are all difficult conditions to start with. You've seen this slide before, a different, this is a simpler version of another slide you've seen. Most of our budget is fixed. This just shows two big wedges, which is the wages and benefits, which is 67%. We, you know, we're people-centered operation, right? We have police officers, firefighters, public works employees. We have people who, you know, do our payroll, who, you know, do permits, everything, right? So it's, it's a lot of people that we employ. And so they, you know, it costs money to keep them and they, they get benefits. And then all our other, so that's about two-thirds of our budget is just to wages and benefits. And then all other spending is about a third. I've shown you a different version of this slide. I wasn't able to, to build it for this presentation, but we'll build it for the next one, which is, even if you take that blue wedge, I think is, you know, somewhat misleading, which is why I like the other version of the slide. You know, of all the other spending, it's not to say that that's, that that, we have a lot of discretion over that either, right? That includes things like our debt service, which we have to pay, right? That's debt that we've incurred for things that council has approved, that we've recommended, for things like equipment, bonding, those types of things. We have to pay for fuel, right? We have fire trucks and police cruisers and plow trucks that need to be fueled, right? And we have to pay for gas, right? So that's not something we can really cut unless we don't want to operate those vehicles. So when you really get down to it, and like I said, we'll get you this updated slide at a, at our next meeting, hopefully, really about 13%, you know, 10 to 15% average of our budget is truly discretionary. You know, all the rest of it is still, you know, we have some obligation to pay, like I said, for things like fuel, right? To heat buildings and to run cars. On the other side of the coin, right, not only are most of our expenses fixed, but most of our revenue is, is really coming from one source, which is property taxes, about three-quarters of it, in fact. And then the other large chunk is city-generated revenue. Those are things like permit fees, fines, rentals, you know, renting the BOR, for example, right? That's all in that 22%. And then that itty-bitty slice is federal and state assistance. Last year, as you can see, that 1 million really made a big difference. Last year, that slice was about 8% of federal and state assistance and that was because of the, the 1 million from the state. So now we're back to the more traditional picture of this, of this slide, which is a, a lot of property taxes and the rest of it really city-generated revenue and then a very small percentage of state and federal funding. This shows you the spending by department in FY '26 and FY '25. So you can, the blue bar is, is the FY '26, which would be sort of our baseline for starting our conversations this year. And basically, this only assumes the things we know, right? Like the increases in the contractual wages that we know are coming. And, and so you can see that most of our, our expenses are really for direct services to residents, right? So public safety is a direct service to resident, public works is direct services to residents. Administration isn't, right? Those, those are the people like myself and Dawn and our, you know, HR and payroll, they're very important. They're just not serving residents directly. We still can't operate without them. But then, you know, facilities, right, those are, those are things that people use recreationally. Those are all, also services to residents. So most of what we're spending our money on is, is going right directly to, to services that our residents are receiving from the city government. So our preliminary budget math, these are just some high-level numbers to get us started, get you a sense of where we are. We have just now a 1.34% increase in expenses and, and Dawn can fill in some of the details. But basically, that just assumes, as I said, the things we know, like, you know, wages, for example, that are going up contractually. What it means is that we'd be at a $1.1 million projected deficit. And that's, you can see there, that's really almost 100% driven by the loss in state operating aid, which we don't have this year. And so to close that gap, we would have to have a 10.7% projected increase to tax rate if nothing changes, right? That's, we know that's not sustainable. That's, we, we know we have to not whittle that down. But that's just where we are, you know, today with, with doing very little. Some of the, some of the changes that we have sort of made on, on our level, just to, to get you these numbers, we've removed the associate planner position and the engineering tech positions. Those have been long-term vacancies. And so we, you know, we, we're proposing to remove them and that's where we get to these numbers. We can obviously restore them if that's what the council wishes. But these numbers assume that that position is, those two positions are removed. We have shifted the superintendent of public works to the enterprise funds. That person is doing, basically now supervising the water and sewer department so they can be paid for under the enterprise fund. So that, that gives us relief on the general fund, but obviously we, and it basically shifts the cost over to enterprise. So it doesn't eliminate the cost. It just gives some relief on the, on the general fund side. And then we've added one, you know, a stipend, cost, or expected cost there for a new part-time treasurer, which we're estimating at $36,000. So those are just some of the, the things that, you know, besides Dawn incorporating like the contractual budget increase, contractual wage increases that we know are coming, these are some of the other changes that we've made to, to inform the numbers that you're seeing today. And then just, you know, examples of reductions we considered last year, you know, to, to give you a sense of where things will have to start heading to whittle that 10.7% down. The associate planner position, which I said, we, we already sort of administratively are recommending to you. Mayor, divert your eyes, cemetery seasonal staff. You know, and this was, I, I, you know, we came out of the gate suggesting an elimination. You know, I think we could, you know, there are maybe ways to do a reduction of it, not a complete elimination. I, I think it's important to make sure that our cemeteries are, are as, remain as beautiful as they are. So I, I don't, I also don't support an elimination, but maybe we can look. So I, I don't, I, I also don't support an elimination, but maybe we can look at reductions, possibly. You know, we're, the bulky waste, yard waste and tire disposal events could be on the chopping block as well. We actually got rid of the tire disposal event in, in the current year budget because there's a, an event that's held by Dick Wabi. That's an opportunity for people to get rid of their tires. So we basically allow people, if they, if they need to get rid of tires, they can do that as part of that event. We don't have to hold our separate event. But the bulky waste is popular. The yard waste, you know, we were very excited. This was the first year of using the, paying to use the Berry Town Yard Waste Disposal Site year-round, which I, I think people enjoyed. But those are things that are not mandatory, that we, you know, that come to the chopping block right away, right? And then, you know, things we really don't like to do, but, you know, delays in replacement of equipment and maintenance. I mean, those, don't like to do that for many reasons. One of them is that, you know, delays in replacement of equipment and maintenance never gets cheaper in the long run. You end up paying for it through the nose and it becomes much more painful. And, and oftentimes, you don't get to decide when you do it. You have to do it because it's an emergency. So, but those are unfortunate types of things we have to start thinking about. You know, state assistance still needed. I think the numbers that I showed you sort of prove that. You know, the 1 million was key. It was, it was just, there wouldn't have been a way to, to really craft a budget without it. You know, when we did ask for that 1 million dollars, I know it probably got lost in the conversation, but we were talking about a multi-year path, right? Like this wasn't going to be a one-year solution. We were talking about a glide path of helping us adjust from, from the hit we were taking. So I, you know, additional assistance will be very important this year. I've been, you know, chatting with our city lobbyists and, you know, we're looking at, you know, possibly an ask in the $200,000 range that would encompass both the $125,000 of approved buyouts that I note here on this slide, as well as the impact of the, the $3 million that the assessors have sort of downgraded in assessed value from the flood, right? So that translates to about $70,000 in lost tax revenue. 125 plus 70 gets you right to that 200 area. So that would, you know, that would help us, right? So if you remember, the deficit was 1.1. All of a sudden, $200,000 starts to whittle away at it. You know, we found $246,000 in cuts last year. If we can do something similar, you can see how we can get to a pathway of a budget that's a little bit more palatable for our, for the voters of Berry. So then I want to get into the survey responses now and give you, you know, the, the results of, of what we got. We got about, we had 216 responses to the survey. The vast majority were residents who responded, 88% in fact. And then smaller percentages each of people who operate a business at 5%. People working Berry at 4%. And visitors, people who visit Berry or use services in Berry at 3%. So a really good response from our residents overall. And so the, the answers that, the responses and the graphs you see in the subsequent slides, I didn't filter them out for residents or non-residents because I thought the, since the overwhelming responses were from residents, I think we can get a, a pretty general picture of what the residents think versus, you know, those who don't vote on our budget. From the ward perspective, it was, you know, fairly even, you know, from 43 to 23%. 43% high in Ward 1, 23% low in Ward 2. But I thought, all things considered, I thought pretty, pretty even distribution for the most part in terms of where people live that were responding to this. This is, the first couple of slides here talk about the demographics, so we know sort of who we're hearing from in terms of these, these responses. About 57% of the respondents were over age 50 and just about the same number, about 58% have lived in Berry for 10 years. So these are the opinions, I think, of people who have been here for, for a long time, for the most part, who are weighing in on the, the survey. The vast majority were homeowners, so 80%, which is not, 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 does not track with the, the demographics of the city generally, the much more, many more renters than, than the 20%, than the 13% who responded. So overwhelmingly 80, property owners. And then in terms of income, pretty clustered right around the middle. The $60,000, $100,000 income level was the highest response rate for those who, who gave an answer on this question. And now getting into more of the, you know, the, the meat of the survey, you know, there were some, you know, some things that tracked. I guess it wasn't totally surprising that some of these things tracked together, but 65% of residents rated services as fair or good. So that was 35% good, 30% fair, and then excellent, 3%. So that was me, my wife, and probably some of you. So, and then needs improvement at, at about 32%. And then also, again, a lot of parallels here, which I guess shouldn't be totally surprising, but also about the same percentage said that they would choose to maintain or increase municipal services, even if it means higher taxes. So I think this, this answer, I think, also translates to some of the other slides. You'll see the maintaining was a pretty big theme as we get further into the next responses. And here we are, actually. So this is resident views on specific departments. So we asked residents two questions about all of these departments and issues. We asked them to, you know, what their view of it was, right? Does it need improvement, good or excellent? And then whether they would decrease funding, maintain funding, or increase funding to these various, it's not just departments, but it just categories. So generally speaking, the way to read this slide is greener tends to be a more favorable answer and a redder hue tends to be a less favorable answer. So for example, if you look at fire and EMS, it says 1 for needs improvement. That's pretty bright green. So that's good, right? That's, that's, that's positive. You want a lower number. If, if it's, if it's lower for needs improvement, that's positive. And then you look down to streets maintenance, which is a pretty red hue there of 134 people think that that needs improvement, which, you know, right? I don't think anyone disagrees with that. It's pretty consistent. So this, this gives you a little heat map. And I think for me, you know, everyone make their own takeaways, just mine is obviously streets and water, wastewater stick out as the needing improvement and economic and housing development as well. And on the other side of this slide, in terms of the decrease, maintain and increase, I think the other piece that sticks out is the, the very consistent green on the maintain. And then I think appropriately and correspondingly, green on increasing streets and water, wastewater, as well as housing and economic development. So if anything, the respondents were pretty consistent, I think, in, in this regard. The next question we asked was in terms of sort of capital investments, how important the following issues, categories were to the, to you in terms of investment, right? So is it very, is it not important? Is it, do you have no real opinion on it, sort of a neutral take? Or is it very important to you? To me, again, a couple, the same, same key here, right? So a redder hue is less favorable and a greener hue is a more favorable response. So to me, the ones that immediately stuck out, people really care about their sidewalks, right? Very important that, that was very, very bright green. Flood resilience also very green. And then very interested to see the non-female buyouts, which pretty red, but I think it's also to not feel that that's important if that doesn't impact you directly. So, you know, just, but again, it stood out, right? As a, as a data point in this response, in this question. This was an interesting result in my mind. We asked people, we listed nine, nine services, activities that, for lack of a better term, are, are non-mandatory, right? So these are things we're not really obligated to do, but we do. And so we, this is the area of the budget because of so much of our budget is fixed, right? That we have some, this, these are some of the first places we go to find adjustments. And so we asked people two questions about these services. And we asked them, what are the top three that you would fund, continue to fund? And what are the top three you would, you would eliminate or cut, right? So the blue bar is, you know, how many people selected that to fund it? And the gold bar is how many people selected that to eliminate it? So people love the Aldrich Library. And then the arrows here sort of tell you the gap, right? So a green gap means that more people voted to fund it than to cut it. And it gives you sort of the, the difference in, in numbers of, of respondents, right? So 120 more people chose to keep the Aldrich Library than chose to eliminate it. And you can just go down the list, right? These were alphabetical, I probably could have ordered them in a better way, but bulky waste pickups was a net cut, right? With, with pretty, pretty high responses, all things considered. City pool, I was really surprised, saddened by this one, but that was a net, people chose to cut. I think the only takeaway, maybe what I'm grasping at, is that it wasn't one of the higher response areas, right? So there, there were many other things that people chose at higher volumes to cut than the city pool, but it still was negative. Community events, this is basically a proxy for the partnership, right? Because we listed specifically Heritage Festival Craft Fair. That was a net maintain by 11 respondents. And then economic development with the parentheses of the ADC was a net maintain by 9%. These also had quite high response rates. Well, they were, they were on many people's ballots, let me just put it that way. And they were, they pretty, you know, pretty even out with slight, slight ending up in terms of funding. Parks playground improvements, also a, a clear winner in terms of maintaining. That was a positive 31. Recreation department is actually a negative 3 with pretty low response rates either way. Seasonal cemetery staff, mayor, I know, I know where your vote was.
Time to gas up my tractor.
You probably know where mine was too. But this was an, also a net negative, but I think this was similar to the pool. It wasn't on a, there were, there were many more things that had more, other things on the ballot, right? This wasn't on, on the top, on the most ballots. So I think also with the pool, that one can be taken with a grain of salt. And then I was surprised by this one myself, but use of Berry Town Yard Waste Site, a negative 37 in, in favor of cutting it. You know, I, I think, I personally think that this was a great thing to do. It's pretty low cost and I think it's probably, it's, it was, it was great to have it year-round this year. So I was, I was pretty surprised by that result myself, but that's what the survey said. And I think.
Interesting. Could we stop?
Yeah.
Just pause for, and not even back on that, but when I look at, and I'm interested in hearing from the council or anyone in the audience. I turn on my faucet and water comes out and it's good quality water. Some people have said that our water tastes too much like chlorine, but I'm, I don't, I don't find that to be the case. I mean, you know, you turn on your water and it, it's there. You flush your toilet and your poo goes away. Now, we have water main breaks on occasion. We have them, we probably average one a month on average. Do you think maybe more than that?
That's pretty fair.
Okay. So we average one a month. There's a lot of miles of pipes throughout the city. We did go through a stretch very recently where, for the first time that I can ever remember, almost the entire city was without water for about a 24-hour period. That was quite a crisis. And that was very unique and honestly unprecedented. I had never experienced that in the, you know, 50 years that I've lived here. But what do you all think people mean when they say our water, our water needs, system needs improvement? Do you think they're talking about the infrastructure or do you think?
I think they're talking about water main breaks.
I mean, we hear about crumbling infrastructure. It's a political buzzword. We've all used it on the campaign trail. But, you know, on occasion, a faucet leaks or breaks in my home, a pipe breaks in my home. It doesn't mean that my home is crumbling. It's just, it's a 100-year-old home. So on occasion, things break. So, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing from, from more people, like what exactly did you mean?
Oh, I think that, you know, we want to make sure that the wastewater treatment plant gets updated, as it is being updated. But I think the, the water main breaks are pretty concerning from what I hear from people. And, you know, the pipes are really old. It's not like your home. It's like a city. So when something breaks in a city, it's really hard for people. So I think that's a concern. Yeah, it's a big concern. And I think the thing that we, I know we don't have a plan yet for replacing the infrastructure, that we don't have like a, we're going to replace this section, that section. But without that plan, we're just constantly surprised by water main breaks and other things that go wrong. So I think that's.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Yeah. So I think that's very important for people.
Right. And, and I guess it would be interesting to hear, I mean, I can't imagine a world where there's not water main breaks at some level. And I think what we try to do, I mean, overall, and I mean this, I think the city, I think the condition of some of our streets, that, that is a different, that is a very different conversation. And it's a conversation that I had with the Secretary of Transportation yesterday. And we're going to be meeting, the secretary and I and Nicholas will be meeting more regularly because the condition of Route 14, Route 302, you know, Route 14 headed by the high school, it's just, it's deteriorated and it's, it's a state road. We can patch it, Nicholas appropriately, because we had pedestrians hurting themselves on Main Street. Nicholas took it upon himself for, was it 60,000 or 80,000?
60.
60? I think it was 60.
Yeah.
To Mill and Phil, you know, Main Street, even though the state, you know, that is the state responsibility. So I think the roads are a different conversation and I'm, I'm hearing people loud and clear. They want something done and, and we need to do something. But, but I also want to manage the expectations. You know, if we spent $2 million, you know, I don't want people to think that if we spent an extra million dollars a year and increased taxes by 10% that we can eliminate water main breaks. You know, we can't. So I think it's, again, I, I, it would be interesting to just hear more from people about what their expectation is and is their expectation. I mean, I don't want any more water main breaks either. It's very inconvenient for folks. Yes?
After reviewing this, I, I think the, the sentiments that come to mind is balance and it's really hard because the things, when you look back at the slide that shows the 79% of our expenses are for direct services to residents, the bulk of it is going to people who are keeping us safe, you know? They're, they're going to the fire department and the police department. And if you are lucky enough to not have to interact with the fire department and the police department, then you're like, what am I paying for, you know? And so then I think you are saying, okay, well, I want, you know, the next one is public works and so I wish my roads were better. And so I think that it's that balance between helping people to recognize what their taxes are paying for. And I recognize that there are some people who are, don't feel that it's as safe to be downtown or that sort of thing. But I think we are doing a good job. We are putting the bulk of our money into public safety. And I think our residents, I would imagine most, I appreciate it that, you know, we, you know, it's not complete mayhem in downtown. Now, some people may argue whether it's complete mayhem, but, okay, that's another story. But I, I do think it's also a balance between how much people can afford to pay in increases and how much they want things to be different. If people really want to spend more and they want better streets, we can give them better streets, but they have to recognize that their taxes are going to go up to do that. That's, it's, it's not possible to do one thing to, to increase services and not increase taxes. And the last thing I'll say is, I also think we need to take with a grain of salt that the large majority of people who did respond were homeowners. And I think that's a different group of people than the people who are renters. And I think when you look at that and you, and you think about city services and you think about sidewalks and the pool and the library, I think you have to take all of that into consideration. I think there's, you know, the, the people who own their own homes might have a pool in their backyard, whereas the people who are renters maybe don't. And so, but we didn't get as much from them to say, hey, I would like to have more, more access to recreation or something of that nature. So I think it's just finding that, that balance, which is never easy. I've, you know, I, it's a thing that we have to do at the school board all the time, is finding the balance between what can the taxpayers afford and what do our students need. And I think it's the same exact thing here. And it's not easy because every, you know, the people who don't drive cars don't care if the roads are, you know, like they, they walk everywhere, so they want good sidewalks. And they don't care if the roads have potholes. And so we can't please everybody there. I think the water here is fabulous. I drink it every single day. But there are some people who don't like the taste of it. We're not going to make everybody happy, but how can we make the most people happy, I guess, is what I'm trying to get to. I guess, is what I'm trying to get to.
I get it. Amy?
Yeah, I'll just throw in some thoughts about the, the water system. I think one thing that's different about people's perception of that is they do pay a separate water bill. So some of it is like capital infrastructure and some of it's they're paying a water bill. So maybe they're more sensitive to like where is their money going and is that turning into investments? And also there's always the complaint of like, oh, I'm paying to flush out my pipes after a water main break and, you know, that's still being metered and that sort of thing. So I think just in terms of people's perceptions, there's that, that there's a separate water and sewer bill, though we're lower than a lot of other Vermont communities on that. I think one of the things about the water main breaks, and I'll say this as someone who's been through a lot of them in my neighborhood, including my own service line breaking and having to be replaced last summer after the Berlin Street water main break, it's really disruptive. So like Smith Street and coming into my neighborhood is a nightmare of potholes. It's been that way for years, but I can steer around the potholes and like, we all kind of know the zigzag path to get around the potholes. Like I don't know when the water mains are going to break. It's very disruptive, like you can't plan for it. And I also worry about the impact that has on businesses. We have a lot of restaurants downtown if they have to go on a boil water notice, if they lose water. So I'm curious about the impact on, on businesses as well. So I think just compared to some of the other infrastructure things, like, yeah, the sidewalks need to be fixed, but does that disrupt your life in the same way that a water main break does? I don't think it does. And I've been through my entire house being dewatered multiple times over the last year. I'm anti bottled water, but I've spent so much money on bottled water this last year. I'm ashamed of it. And I have to keep, you know, jugs around because I'm waiting for the next water main break. You know, it was me walking dog around the neighborhood that caught that somebody wasn't home and their service line froze, you know, a few weeks back. And I didn't even think about the fact that because we don't have valves located as often as we would like, they had to turn off water for our entire neighborhood. The entire neighborhood drained out. So it's just, if you, if you're getting responses from the parts of towns who have been through this over and over again the last few years, myself included, I'm a huge proponent of public water. It's what I do for my career, but it has been frustrating this last year. And I, I think particularly the, the concept of also playing, paying a water bill probably pays and plays into people's reactions to it. And, and just as a broader comment, like I think as you have the budget discussions going on, the survey was kind of looking at all the aspects of the budget, but they do play out differently for the enterprise accounts for water and wastewater where there's some usage support versus the capital budget versus the, the general budget. And, you know, the other water related thing for the pool, there's an operating expense related to the pool. And I'm a lot more worried about our drinking water than I am the pool. And I am curious if the pool is still running an operational deficit.
Thank you. Ellen?
Yeah, I just wanted to just reflect on who answered this, just to echo a little bit of what Sonja said, but when we look at the income levels, taken together, people between 60,000 and 200,000 were the vast majority of the people who answered this survey. And some people over, over 200,000. The median income in Berry, household median income is about $53,000. We have a 25% poverty rate and 53% of the households are renters. So the majority of the households are renters. So while this was a good effort, it's not something that statistically we're going to rely on to understand what people are thinking and feeling in this town. As surveys go, I'm not sure how useful it is. It's a straw poll, but let's remember that the people who are speaking do not represent the majority of the residents of Berry City. And they're going to have very different concerns. So, I mean, you could, you could play around with the results of this survey and spin it. I could spin it one way, you could spin it another way, another person could spin it a third way. So I just want us to remember that this is a good, this may be a good conversation starter, but it is not something that is going to be, could, should be used to justify decisions about what gets funded and what gets dumped, what gets cut. Thanks.
Thank you. Bern, did you ever hand up earlier? Or did you put it back down?
I put it back down, thank you. There's some other really good people who shared ideas similar to mine. But I, I also just would say, the comment about the water bill being, and sewer bill being separate, that's a good observation that I hadn't thought of. And I think we are doing a lot tonight. We, what we targeted over $400,000 for our sewer system. And I think people noticed that. It's something that we can't avoid right now, but I'm glad that we're reviewing who's paying for that and that it includes not just residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to continue with this?
That was, yeah, that was mostly, I can, I can, yeah, let me put up the last slide, which was the, just the, the process for the next couple of weeks, which.
Didn't mean to derail you.
No, that's fine. It was good. It was good to hear that feedback. So, yeah, so this was the last slide we were on with, this was the, sort of the non mandatory piece. And then just the last slide is process wise, and actually I have an, an update to this after scheduling today. So we'll be doing budget every meeting from now until April 8th. So that's a given. We're going to do the staff budget congress after we get some direction and consensus from you tonight. The partner presentations will actually happen the first week of, the first meeting in March, so that'll be March 11th. So that was scheduled that way to accommodate them. And then we'll be, you know, like I said, budget, budget until we have to get something warned on April 8th to go to the voters on May 13th. So with the only change being when the partners happen, we can just expect to be doing something about touching on this subject for the next couple of months. So that was it. Thank you.
Yes?
Could we have some up close and personal information about the budget? Like could we look at the auditorium, BOR and the pool, what it costs to maintain them and what they bring in? Just so we have a sense of how, how deep the holes are.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I mean, you know, we kept this packet light, right? Because we were hoping to get some high level direction. But I, I think from every meeting from here on out, we'll be getting the, the line by line, which we're used to getting, and we can look at those in isolation. You know, I, I do want to make sure we, you know, and I, in terms of getting the direction, I want to make sure it's a consistent direction, right? Because we spend a lot of time talking about whether the recreation position should be kept or not kept. If we don't have an auditorium or a BOR, there's no point in having a recreation person, right? So I, I don't, you know, I think the only, and Dawn is on and she might be able to give us snap feedback, but I believe the only operation that's running at a surplus up on the hill is the ice because we have some great renters, right? Black Bears, Spalding, Figure Skating Club. Dawn, do you have, are you able to, can you validate that snap judgment? I, I hate to put you on the spot, but is that generally accurate? I don't know if she.
I can.
Yes. Yeah.
It's accurate. It's an accurate statement.
Yeah, the pool, I think is a little bit closer. We've had some really good seasons at the pool, but it's probably, it's certainly not making a lot of money if it's making anything. But, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that in terms of the direction we get, I, I want, you know, some consensus, consensus, right? Because if we do start to look at, it's nothing wrong with looking at them, but I, you know, if we don't have those facilities, we also don't have recreation.
I just wanted to look.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Of course.
Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had another comment, not related to the water thing, but in terms of lots of support for flood resilience projects and then also for parks and playgrounds. And there's some things that Council Augustine's been talking about with some relationships between those, but I just wanted to point that out. I've got the bias of the Vine Street Playground being in, in my neighborhood and it being subject to flooding. There's also the map that was showed at one of the recent city council meetings about the current status of buyouts. And there are a whole lot of flood buyouts along the banks of the Stevens Branch in the back of Vine and Scampini. And, and that was focused on the buyouts, but it didn't, didn't point out that right next to that is the Vine Street Playground. So it, that may end up serving multiple functions, that area. It'll be unfortunate that it's not houses for people to live in anymore, but if that is both a flood plain and potentially a recreational resource, it might be both of those. So I think that's something where, and, and that's not necessarily something that has to be staffed, right? Like you don't necessarily need recreational people. We don't have like playground attendance that we pay for, but if we invest in the structure, then, then people can, can use the parks areas, you know, more passively throughout time. So just something to keep in mind, I know there's a couple, I think Nativity and some other playgrounds are also kind of in, in flood areas, but if we can find ways to do two for one on that, it's a good idea.
Councilor Deering, did you have a comment?
So I, just more of a concern, I've heard, I do a lot with hockey and there was some concern about potentially limiting some of the hockey scheduling for next season, men's hockey and some other things. Is that any concern, Nicholas?
No, I think the, the thing that we've wanted to do is have some consistent hours at the BOR. So right now, what, what had been happening at the BOR for, for a long time is, which our customers really liked, was sort of on demand scheduling, right? So if you want to have hockey at six in the morning, which some people do for some reason.
Oh, yeah.
We would accommodate that.
Right.
Right? But then we, our next customer wouldn't be until nine, right? So we'd be paying a facility staff person to come in at 5:30 to make ice, open the building.
Yep.
And then sit around for a couple hours, right? And so that, it's not efficient.
Sure.
So it was, we've started implementing it this year and we've had some really good cooperation with some of the, some of those renters, right? Which we, we told them what the issue was, which is we, we just really don't want to be paying somebody hours to be sitting around. Like there's things they can do at the BOR, but it's limited, right? Because it's one person.
Yeah.
So they've been really accommodating of that. So what we're looking at is, and it's the same thing on the other end, right? So there's, there's some groups, especially I think there's a Thursday night group that plays until 11, 11:30. And so same thing, right? We have a huge gap in terms of when they're there and how late the staff has to stay. So what we're going to try to do is have fixed hours, like many facilities do, right? Like we're, we're going to be open from seven to nine.
Yep.
Right? And so, and we're going to be staffed from seven to nine. And we're going to try to be relatively consistent with the, the schedules people have used, but that will allow us to have a, a little bit more consistent schedule and not burn a lot of overtime and, and that. So we certainly don't want to limit it. We're just trying to get to a place where we're not doing like on demand scheduling because that, that's pretty tough on the staff and the budget.
Do we have next year's schedule already?
No, no, we, we won't know. We're basically now, we know when the turf will, we have a rough ballpark of when the turf will come in because that, that'll depend on hockey playoffs. So it depends on how well the teams do. But we have a, a range of when the turf will come in. We actually, we have to do the, the manifolds this summer, so we have a, the turf will have to come out for a couple of weeks, then it'll go back in. And then it usually goes in the, the first, second week of October. But we're going to meet with all the renters in the summer just to say, these are the hours we're thinking of. We want to accommodate your schedules, but this is what, you know, we want you also to live within those schedules.
Okay.
Right, so.
Appreciate the clarity.
Yep, sure.
I can relay that as well.
And we, like I said, you know, we, we depend on them. The, they're the ones who, the, the ice is the one that makes money up there. And so we, we want to work with them. We just want to make sure that we have some operational clarity throughout the year.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Understood. Lisa Liotta?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to respond to Nicholas's comment that if we don't have a pool, we don't have a recreation department. And there are many, many municipalities in Vermont that don't have pools that have pretty robust recreation departments. And if, if they're not managing a pool, they can develop after school programs for kids and for youth and seniors and people of all ages. And I think that recreation can be economic development. And it's also a huge attraction for people who are looking to move to Berry. If there are things to do here for you and your kids and your family, it makes it a much more attractive place to live. So I just, I just wanted to offer that perspective as a former recreation professional, that recreation is so much more than operating facilities and it can be so much more than what we've had in the past. And there's lots of templates all across Vermont for communities that do this really, really well. And that's all I wanted to say. I don't think it's an either or situation. I, I strongly believe recreation is super important. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Question about the partner presentations. When, are those, the partners being Aldrich Berry Partnership and BADC, are those allocations, they're built into the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so there, we can, do we get, we get to decide how much we allocate or don't allocate?
Yes, you do. You get to decide every line in the budget, in fact.
Do we get a line by line report?
We actually don't. We're lucky to have a collaborative process. Technically, the manager gives us a budget and could say, take it or leave it. That's never happened. The managers have always been collaborative.
But my question is, do we get a line by line report to see what we allocated last year and then what you're proposing we allocate this year?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we, we do. It's a little sobering, huh? I mean, I know, I guess I've got to make more phone calls tomorrow because I always felt like my number was a little higher. You know, flood impacted communities, we received a million dollars in pursuant to the 23 flood and I'm grateful for that. The 24 flood, obviously it affected different municipalities differently. You know, poor, you know, Johnson Plainfield, I mean, they just got crushed, you know? Thankfully for our neighbors in Montpelier, they, they, they didn't, they virtually didn't flood at all in 24. And anecdotally, I'm not minimizing folks who continue to suffer year after year, but when you look at Berry and you look at our, you know, you look at our damages, anecdotally, it, it felt like about 25% of what 23 was. So what I've been saying to folks in the legislature and to the administration, quarter million dollars, you know, for, just for the 24 flood, not even talking about, you heard Council Representative Wazisak talk about assistance for municipalities whose grand lists have been impacted. So hopefully we see that. So, you know, I'm hopeful that given the time, we'll have to consider the budget. I'm hopeful that we do see some sliding type relief, you know, from Montpelier because as you can see, you know, we really need it. I, I mean, I have mixed feelings when I look at this. You know, my number, I think five, maybe six percent. You know, we are recovering from a flood, so I think numbers like that. I look at cutting economic development, not crazy about that. I look at cutting recreation, not crazy about that. I mean, you know, there's, there's not a lot of good choices here because, and I understand that demographically, it seemed to be an older population responding to this, but if we're a community that wants to attract young families or wants to attract singles, you know, younger singles, well, recreation is the last thing that you want to cut. Economic development is the last thing you'd want to cut. Housing is the last thing, you know, you want to cut. So, you know, we've got our, we've got our work, Kyle, for us. Thank you to everyone who did respond to the survey. I, I don't disagree with Ellen. I wish we had a greater cross section. I would have loved to have seen, you know, kind of 50/50 on homeowners versus renters. You know, I, I think overall, I think the, the information is useful. Folks don't have to worry. I'm not going to sit, look at it and say, well, they cut recreation. I'm not going to support the school and I'm not going to support a recreation director. I will likely try to figure out a way to support both. So it's all useful information and maybe we could put the survey back out there. I don't know how much, I, I mean, I don't, I want to be mindful of your time and Dawn's time. I don't want you burning up all your time, you know, deciphering the results of a survey. So if it.
I mean, it's, it's not a challenge to put it back out. It's, it's the data, the data management can take some time, but if, if, if that's what the council wants to do.
Yes.
It can't, but it can't be that bulky, not doing bulky waste is not going to save us a ton of money. You know, it's just not going to be significant. Even if we don't do that or we don't do those other things, it's tiny.
Listen, we'll, we'll be okay. The only thing, and I'm not saying, I'm trying to be a better listener, okay? But I also have spent a career, an entire career, 35 years, working with some of the But I also have spent a career, an entire career, 35 years, working with some of the best business owners, I think, in the state of Vermont, and some of the worst business owners in the state of Vermont. That's the wonderful thing about sitting at my desk every day, is I get to work with hundreds of small business owners every day. And some of them are absolutely incredible. But the one thing that all of the best have always said to me is, you never cut your way to the bottom. You know, you can't, in other words, you can't cut your way to success. You start eliminating, and I'm just letting you know how I feel. I'm willing to keep an open mind, but, you know, to start cutting things like the place where my dad is buried, no, that doesn't feel good to me. To start cutting recreation, that doesn't feel good to me. You know, I think for the most part, we've got the right formula. The thing that does resonate with me, the roads. They are bad. And I can tell you why, because I'm experiencing it personally. All of the parking lots that we had that were flood-impacted have failed prematurely. The water literally gets between the layers of the pavement, and it peels it up. And we're seeing that in a lot of places around the city. So we've got a lot of work to do in our streets. People are, you know, that's why I'm making the calls to Secretary Flynn, and that's why I'll continue to make those calls. We need especially to get, you know, 302 and 14. We need to get those streets straightened out. They're bad. And, but, we need to clean up our own house as well. You know, we're going to need, I'm thankful, you know, Hope Cemetery with $2.4 million from the Cozy Funds. That means that our cemetery fund will generate annually, on an annual basis, invested at 5%. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
5%? Okay, that's $120,000. That's going to be in the cemetery income line that wasn't there in last budget year. So there's 120 grand. 1.6 million that went to the city from the Cozy Fund, that's going to generate $80,000 a year in extra interest income. I know you both work on finances, but I got to believe, just given where interest rates have gone, savings account interest rates have gone in the last year, I got to believe that our investment income is going to be 100 grand more? I mean, you know, we're not broke. We generally have a fair amount of excess cash hanging around at any given time. So what is that number? 50? 100? It's not small, so, you know.
No, it's not, it's sizable.
We'll figure it out. That's my prediction. There will have some knock-down dragouts between now and the time we present a budget, and everyone will have an opinion, and everybody's opinion needs to be heard, but we'll figure this out. It's okay. Anything else, counsel? And if you want, does everyone have a copy of last year's budget? I always find, okay, could you?
I can send that, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the webpage, but you know what? I'll make sure that Dawn, if Dawn is still on, Dawn, if you could send a copy, including the tax calculation page, if you could send that to the council, it'd just be a good place, you know, a good place for Saul to start. Okay. So unless there's anything else, folks, we will move on. While we won't be doing our flood resiliency plan update, Counsel Augustine is not with us this evening, so we'll defer that to the next meeting. So we'll go, move to item 8E on the agenda, and this is to discuss charter change regarding the appointment of a clerk. Counselor Stockwell.
Thank you. I've been thinking about this position, and I've been reading something about city clerk and the transition from elected to appointed. And to me, it seemed to have a lot of value, so I want to bring it forward so that perhaps we could put it on the ballot for this coming year. To me, what the city clerk does requires increasingly, increasingly good technical skills, and that doesn't happen on the ballot. You know, you can't evaluate that on the ballot. So for me, I just thought, what they really need is good technical skills, and the council and/or the city manager needs to be able to assess that. And while there is training and supervision available for whether you're an appointed or an elected clerk, supervision and training happens easier if you're part of a staff. And I think the process for hiring and removal that's already laid out for appointed clerks is pretty transparent and would be a good process for us to undertake. It would give the council a little more say about who ends up being clerk, and it would, it would be, I think, it would allow us to look more closely at what skills the clerk has. And I think it would save the city some potential liability risk if we had an appointed clerk. So I attached some facts, and I looked at some of the places that had recently moved to an appointed clerk. And I read an article in Seven Days about it, I did some research, and it seems to me that this would be a process that the city might benefit from. And it is also a process that more and more cities in Vermont are choosing.
Yes, two questions. First off, I'm curious what liabilities you think, Counsel Stockwell, what liabilities you think the differences would be? What lack of liability we would then be not have?
No, no, the city always has liability. But I think if we could assess the skills needed for the position through an appointed process, we would be more likely to get someone who is able to fulfill those functions.
So are you talking more like a job interview?
Well, yeah. An application, an interview, a committee that's recommending people to come forward to council, somewhat like we did when we were doing the city manager, but less, a little less complex perhaps in that.
And would you be able to forward me those references you have for that other research that you had done? You'd only submitted the stuff, I think it's from VLTC, correct? Or the Appointed Municipal Clerks FAQ?
I will certainly forward you, I will forward you any information you would like.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodd's?
I sat in that seat for 16 years, and so I hope that...
You were never mayor. Oh, that's, oh, yeah, you did.
And I hope that I can be afforded the respect that goes along with those 16 years of service. I disagree with the statement that the council needs to provide oversight to a clerk treasurer position. I think one of the benefits of an elected clerk treasurer position is the independence of that office, the opportunity for checks and balances. One of the very first things I said to the council when I came on board was that the relationship between the two, between the council and the clerk, is that we work together. One doesn't work for the other. We work together, and that is what makes for a strong community. I've mentored many clerks throughout the state over the years, and I have said to them, one of the most important things they have is that joint relationship with the council and/or the select board, and I don't think that comes from top-down kinds of appointment. The other concern that I have is that the clerk is the chief election official for the municipality, and to me, it creates a real conflict when you have the elected officials for the community, meaning the select board members or city council members, supervising the chief election official for the community. I don't think that's the right approach for municipal government. I do, I stepped into the position with absolutely no experience. Cheryl had five years of experience as an assistant when she stepped in, but I came on with just two years of council experience, and believe me, sitting up there is nothing compared to sitting in the office and the work that's done there. So I know what it's like to start with little or no experience and training myself up. There are incredible resources available out there. And between clerks that offer mentorships through the League, through the Clerk and Treasurers Association, to continuing education opportunities, to trainings through the League of Cities and Towns, there are lots of great opportunities for people to train up and become prepared for doing the work. And the work changes all the time, so you could come in with an incredible skill set, and then the statutes all change, and you start all over again the next year. So I think it's important that the position remain independent and elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Stockwell?
One of my concerns is, just simply back to the transition from Carol to Cheryl, and that was that we had no one who wanted to run, and we finally found someone who was willing to do a write-in campaign. So my biggest concern is, what happens, the thing about having an elected position is, it can only be people who live in Berry City. And if no one wants to do it, then we're kind of stuck to have to appoint someone anyway. I'm just concerned that we're lucky that we have someone who was willing to serve for 16 years, and we're lucky that someone said, okay, I'll do this. But I'm concerned, like, long-term, are we going to be able to have someone who wants to do this job, wants to continue to do the job? You know, I don't know, after two years, Cheryl might be like, yeah, I don't really want to do this anymore, and then we'll be training someone else. And so I'm just concerned about how we could continue to have turnover, and I mean, to be perfectly honest, I'm really concerned. I think Cheryl's doing a fine job. I think you did a great job. I'm concerned about the unknown and the person who might be the only one on the ballot that might get voted in and has zero experience, has no idea of what they're doing, and now we are beholden to someone who really could mess up a lot of things for us. That's one of my...
You just described me 16 years ago when I stepped into this position.
You just described me in 2006.
But I will say this, but I will say this, though. You did not have, your personal agenda wasn't to create havoc. And I look at the havoc that's being, the chaos that we're living through right now on a different level, and I think about how that could be impacting our city. So that's my concern.
And I don't think that taking a preemptive move like this for a hypothetical situation serves the city well.
Oh.
It can happen with school superintendents.
AJ, did you, did you have a comment? Oh, well, wait, is it not, sorry, was someone, but it's AJ's on the screen.
Yeah, it's AJ's name. It's Kaitlin Burnham again. I have a question. Are we, as taxpayers, still paying for Cheryl to get contract help for this job that she has been in for nine months now?
You know, folks, I really don't want this to get personal. This is not...
I'm just curious. I, like, this...
I'm just reminding, can I speak, please?
Valid question.
In my own meeting, you're out of order. I'm just reminding people, I realize you just want to go off on me, I'm just reminding people, because I've heard Cheryl's name mentioned a few times, this is not a conversation about Cheryl. I'm just reminding people. If you'd like to continue, AJ, go ahead and unmute her.
If they can unmute now.
Yes, so I, it's not about Cheryl. She is, just happens to be the clerk at this moment. My question is, how long do taxpayers realistically expect to be paying a contractor to be helping the new city clerk?
It's, we're not.
We don't.
So she's not getting any paid help from anybody?
Is, is, is the city clerk, the city clerk is paid, yes.
Yes, no, the city clerk is paid, but, so Carol mentioned mentors. Mentors don't get paid. That's great that there's those resources. I'm just curious, if we, as a city, are paying anybody in particular to be giving Cheryl the knowledge that she needs to do her job competently?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
I would like to affirm, this is not a conversation about Cheryl or about Carol. Both of who are appreciated. But in looking across Vermont, there have been a number of issues with city clerks who were elected, and often those cities and towns changed to appointed because it was a really big issue. So I think being appointed gives us the best chance to steer clear of those kinds of issues, which, once they happen, you know, whatever happens, happens. Your elections, you know, imperiling an election is an incredibly serious thing.
Oh, I won't support this. Not only will I struggle to support it, I can't. Because ultimately, I don't believe that six or seven people in an opportunity where we've traditionally put things in front of voters, if the voters want to make a bad decision, if the voters want to reject a school budget six times, I may not agree with it, but I have to accept it. And we have, if you look at municipalities, who, you know, generally, they're municipalities that are much smaller than Berry, who are appointing their clerk and treasurer, because they're smaller municipalities, and it's virtually impossible to bifurcate the two positions, because, you know, in a smaller municipality. That's not necessarily the case here in Berry. Up until five years ago, we didn't have a finance director. Was that five?
A little bit, no, a little bit longer, seven, eight.
You know, we didn't have a finance director, and we finally recognized that we needed to, that our municipalities' finances were, in fact, that complex. You know, as I think of the city clerk, I mean, we've been fortunate. We had a wonderful city clerk for 16 years. We have a wonderful city clerk now. We have a very competent city clerk now. But that city clerk is chosen by the voters, and that city clerk is an equal. And fortunately, in my case, on occasions where I overstepped charter, overstepped the council, in general, overstepped its authority, we had a city clerk who would remind us kindly but sternly, hey, you can't do that. And most importantly, the city clerk watches over the elections. And, yeah, we're all watching what's happening and what's coming out of Washington. We're watching the, you know, the executive order de jour, and at times, it's horrifying. And for that very reason, I would not want an appointed person watching over our elections. We have blown it. We have had some ugly, ugly appointment processes here in this council chambers, and the position of city clerk is much too important to leave to us. I think I could trust this council to appoint a decent city clerk. I hope I could, but I don't know about future councils. But I can always trust the voters, because at the end of the day, it's their city. So if they decide, if somebody who is not competent decides to run for city clerk, well, either the voters are going to elect them or not. But it's the voter's decision, and it's our job to live with it, just like we live with failed budgets when we don't like it, just like we live with surveys, and we look at it, and we listen to people, and we try to govern based on what they're all telling us. So, you know, for that reason alone, I absolutely would not want an appointed person being watchdogged on the elections, because I'll tell you, that is, both with Cheryl and with Carol, I have watched them both take that responsibility so seriously. And they're not beholden to the city council, and I'm not welcome. I don't set foot in the polls unless Cheryl or Carol told me historically that I could. And if I wasn't invited, I had no right to be there. I didn't supervise them. I wasn't their boss. I never tried to exert influence on them, but I knew damn well that I couldn't exert influence on them. So, you know, again, just for that very reason, you know, 200 years ago, this has served us well in Berry for 200 years. We haven't made any disastrous mistakes, and as Carol said, this is all about a hypothetical. Today, I'm grateful for Cheryl's service. I'm certainly grateful for Carol's past 16 years of service. And I think ultimately, I think our voters will continue to make the right decisions. Amy?
Counselor?
Oh.
Sean Bellows had her hand for a while.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry, I missed you. Amy, just a sec, Amy. Please.
Just, and hopefully I can reconnect with my brain. I think that some of our reactions right now are in light of exactly what everybody is saying, the current political situation, which is uncomfortable, which is unpredictable, and, yes, horrifying. But the reality is that the council could be stacked in a very different direction, and if they appointed somebody, it could backfire, the same as electing somebody who might not work out. I mean, I think it's, I think it's unpredictable in either direction. I really do. I, you know, and I think that's the nature of people. I would like to believe, and I shouldn't say this out loud, that if the wrong person is elected, that somehow the message would be clear to them that this really isn't working. And, you know, I don't know if that's a fair thing to say. I'm just, I think it's... I'm just, I, I think it's just a really hard one to be completely sure about. I really, really do. And, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I think Carol's argument that others have reiterated about having an independent election officer is pretty important. It's why at a state level, we have an independent treasurer, an independent attorney general, an independent secretary of state. Part of what's falling apart at the federal level is we're not having checks and balances. We're not having FBI and attorney general that are being independent from other parts of the executive branch. We're not having the three branches of government acting as independent checks and balances. So I'm hearing two different things. The things are chaotic, but then we want to consolidate things potentially with fewer checks and balances, and that doesn't make sense to me. I don't know where this is coming from. The city is so buried in mud and broken water mains and all of this, like, I'm really confused about a lot of things that the city council is spending time on, frankly. So I don't know what's motivating this. And people can say it's not targeted at Cheryl, but I don't know what's going on. There was kind of a parade of little complaints at the beginning of the meeting tonight that seemed to be digs at her, and I find those really obnoxious. I, I don't know where this is coming from and why we need it, and it just feels like there's something else going on. And I, I almost spoke up at Visitors and Communications at the beginning, but I thought the city council had more important things to do than to bring this up. But every city council packet has a set of ground rules in it. And I've been noticing over the last few weeks, does anybody ever read those? Why are they in there if it's not actually what you guys follow? They talk about mutual respect. They talk about assuming good in front, debate issues, not personalities. And I don't know if this takes back to Lucas Herring when he was mayor. I think it might, but...